I will call this meeting to order from behind this wonderful group in front of me, which is the Hauser Chamber Orchestra. This is the Village of Riverside Board of Trustees regular meeting for Thursday, November 6, 2014. The time is 7:00. And I ask you to please call the roll.
President Souths.
Here.
Trustee Sussman.
Here.
Trustee Pollitt.
Here.
Trustee Valerie.
Here.
Trustee Collins.
Here.
Trustee Foley.
Here.
Interim Manager Francis.
Here.
Village Attorney Molina.
Here.
Village Attorney Mars.
Here.
Also present Village Clerk Haley. Unavailable this evening is Trustee Hamilton.
Thank you. We have a quorum. Before we stand for the pledge, I just want to welcome the Hauser Chamber Orchestra here and also Orchestra Director Patricia Gill. They're going to play for us tonight "The Star Spangled Banner," and after they are finished, Ms. Gill is going to give us a little brief history of why this is being played tonight, because this is an auspicious time in the history of our anthem. So if you would please stand for the pledge and then remain standing afterwards for our National Anthem.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated.
I am the Orchestra Director at Hauser and Riverside District 96. This is our Chamber Orchestra. These are our top students. We actually have 160 string players in our district. I think that's something our community should be very proud of. We play tonight because "The Star Spangled Banner," this is the 200th anniversary of the composing of "The Star Spangled Banner." It was composed in 1814 at the end of the War of 1812. The story is he was watching the War of 1812, and he saw that the flag was the only thing waving at the end of the war, and hence the words of "The Star Spangled Banner." Interestingly, it did not become our National Anthem until 1931. There was always a little debate if that should be our National Anthem or not, but it is, so bravo. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. I kind of like having them there. Thank you, Ms. Gill. Thank you to everyone in attendance and to everyone watching at home. If you're here with us this evening, you're welcome to speak at any time during our meeting. You can either speak during the time for public comment at the start of the meeting or if you'd like to wait until later in the meeting for a specific agenda item, you're welcome to speak at as well. I just ask that you be recognized by the President and that you give your comments from the podium so that folks at home can see and hear what you have to say. So first up this evening, we have a presentation by Chief Thomas Weitzel concerning some traffic findings within the city. Chief Weitzel.
Mr. President, Trustees, and Manager Francis, I was asked to look at, by the Board initially to look at cul-de-sacs and one-way outs along Harlem Avenue several months ago. And since then, I was asked to look at the speed bumps, humps, and traffic tables and give some feedback on some data collection we did on Fairbank Road, specifically the 100 block. And also in your packet, you'll see there's a memo from me on the initiatives the Department has undertaken in 2013 and 2014. So if the manager would like me to start with the issue that most of the residents are here for, or would you like me to proceed and go through that? Start with the Fairbank Road traffic study. We were asked, well, actually going back now almost nine months ago, we received a grant from the township to purchase a speed data collection box. It was a $3,500 grant the township gave us, and we have so far used that data box and 100 block of Fairbanks. That's the only location. We didn't receive it till about four or five months ago. We ordered it as long as nine months ago, but it took a while for us to get it and get trained. That was used there because we had many concerns from the residents on the 100 block of Fairbank that that 100-block cutoff from Berry Point, so the Fairbank to Fairbank between the Presbyterian Church and the Berry Point Bridge was being used as a cutoff to avoid Berry Point Road. And the traffic volume was heavy, or heavier than normal, and cars were driving in a reckless manner. So initially, we put officers out there and did speed enforcement when we could. As is typical in the residential areas, usually when the marked police car is there, traffic is very well behaved. When the marked car leaves, traffic usually returns. If there is some reckless driving, it will usually take place after that. During that period that the officers did speed enforcement, and they continue to do it up till now, there was only two traffic citations issued. And some of that came because not that they weren't going over the speed limit, because some cars weren't going over the speed limit, but they weren't going over that we could get a ticket into the court system. So they weren't going 11 miles over the speed limit. It didn't mean that the officers didn't stop the car or make a warning, but citations weren't issued on cars that the speed was under 11 miles an hour. In addition to that, I have to put the police cars over there when there's not calls for services or there's not other calls to be handled, so it kind of was sporadic as to when they were being assigned. Sometimes they were there during the day, other times it was early evening, sometimes it was even at night. It was not on the midnight shift. It's probably not wise manpower to assign specific radar enforcement to residential streets on the midnight shift. The officers should be out there looking for other offenders and really protecting the neighborhood for burglaries and other type of criminal activity. But they spent a lot of hours over there, and I know they interacted with some of the residents that there. We initially put Sergeant Leo Coder in charge of that program, and then just recently we put Sergeant Jeff Miller in charge of that program. The data that we collected is included in the speed data memo that I gave you, and it was shared with several of the residents that are here tonight. And then we met with the manufacturer, because I want to explain something about the box. The box is called the JMR box. It's the newest device that police departments can use. It's not a professional traffic engineering device. Those are much more expensive. They're about $12,000. You've probably seen the rope to go across the roadway with the boxes. It's not a permanent. This is a box that has a 10% error according to the manufacturer, so you could have a 10% either way, and that could be traffic volume or speed, but it is a good way to measure. So for the amount of money we got for the grant, it's a device that we were able to use, that we never really used before. And really, the data on that box showed that the overall enforcement rating was low, that it was, percentage was 1.5. And what that really means is the percentage between over 11 miles an hour. So the box measures the speed, and it also measures the data, I mean the volume, but the printout on the cover page is for traffic offenders. If you want to see the data of the amount of cars the box said were traveling there in this eight-day period or 11-day period, you'd have to go to the daily stats, which shows that there is as many as, according to the traffic data, 655 cars in a 24-hour period. That doesn't mean every single 24-hour period there are that many cars, but there were at one time as many as 655 cars, both directions, north and southbound. So taking into a 10% error, you're probably talking at 600 cars. Is that a lot? You'll probably hear from the residents there that it is. Is it a lot based to other residential streets in Riverside? I don't know, because we've never measured those. We are specifically targeting the 100 block of Fairbank. Were there cars that were speeding? There were. Were there cars that were over the 11 miles an hour? Yes, there were. Does the data box catch that? It does. But how it registers is that it's based on what is considered the gold standard. So the traffic box is meant to give law enforcement a guide as to whether the volume is high or low based on the violations, not based on the volume, although it does collect the volume as you've seen here. So if we're going by this data, it would show that the enforcement was very low as far as the speed goes. Almost 85% of the vehicles, the average speed according to the data collection was 22 miles an hour. You'll see on there it says percentile 66.7. It means that 66.7% of the vehicles were traveling between 19 and 28 miles an hour, which if you're a traffic engineer, they would consider that their gold standard, that their, if the speed limit's 25, if average cars are going 28, that's pretty good. Now, that's just from an engineer's standpoint. Now, you'll see on the, I also included a speed sign. And the reason I included that was I was initially looking for ideas in addition to traffic enforcement by my officers to reduce speed and traffic volume on the street. So some of the things that we did change in the meantime was Fairbank now is a 20-mile-an-hour school zone, because we were able to include it because the Presbyterian Church has a preschool in it, which under the state law qualifies. Their block of the 100 block is within the distance required to make that a school zone. So we dropped the speed limit to 20. I think it had a little bit of effect, but I think some of the residents here will tell you that it hasn't had the biggest effect that they would have hoped. And then we also did some cleavage with the Public Works Departments of tree branches and things that may have obstructed different signs, and we increased the roadway markings on Berry Point Road in the hopes that it would help, you know, Fairbanks. But that's what I was looking at. I was looking at to try to get a grant to put on the, would be for when the cars turn off of Berry Point or the bridge and to come onto Fairbank, down a ways there'd be this traffic sign, and you've seen him, it's the same one that's on Berry Point. That initial idea was well-received, I think, by the residents that live there and the ones that are here. However, they came back to us at a different meeting, with the Public Works Director was involved, of an idea of speed bumps, humps, of those types of devices. And there is a memo in there on that, too. And they had the idea that they thought it'd be better to put the speed bumps, humps, or tables into the roadway. So we told the residents that we would look at that, and we did. There actually are three types. There's a speed bump, which is actually like a parking bump. It's a much more obstructive, according to the manufacturer. There's speed humps, which are much smoother, and they're usually much brighter because they're X-ed out with yellow signs. And there's speed tables. Tables are also curved, but the difference between the tables, you can plug a device into it, and the table will measure all this stuff that the box measures. So the speed table will give us speed limit, you know, volume, any other type of reports that can be generated. So those are the three devices that we looked into. I did along with the Public Works Director and my staff. I do have information on those if the Board wants to discuss that later. I do have price ranges on those if the Board wants to discuss that later. But during my research, word spread that we were looking at these devices. And within the last month, I've received phone calls from Fairbank, oh no, Kimbark, because there's a preschool in the church at Kimbark and Park Place. The Director of that school came to us and asked us that if the village puts in speed bumps or humps, that, Kimbark wants to be included in that program. We got a call from a resident on South Coat, whose child goes to Ames, who would like to be included in any study. And we have since heard from District 96 parents that they would like to be included on both Aitkinside Road and Woodside Road for speed tables or what they called in-road devices. So one of my concerns was is when we do discuss in-road devices, which are the bumps, humps, and tables, that we have to keep in mind that permanent speed bumps and tables, we may have other areas asking us to do the same thing. I know that residents on the 100 block of Fairbanks are concerned with what's going on in their area, and maybe not just their block. I think they're concerned with Berry Point and their major areas, but I think we're going to get, we could expect to see other residents, preschools, and schools make requests for the same devices. That's not to say it's not the right thing to do. It's just that I think the program would expand beyond the 100 block of Fairbank in the future. You can see I asked the Director, Public Works Director, to submit a memo and the Fire Chief to submit a memo. I will say that their memos and my memos are mixed up, but they're in there. You'll see the cul-de-sac memo and the speed hump memos from the Fire Chief and the Public Works Director. The Public Director is here. He could certainly answer questions about how the devices, if the Board wants to get into that, how they're installed, what the impact is. Do they have to be put in and taken out? Are they permanent devices? And any other questions that I could ask for you on those two issues? And then once those are addressed, maybe I will go on to the, I think the road closure of cul-de-sac was mainly towards Harlem Avenue and then my overall initiatives for the year. So if the Board would like me to answer any questions for them now related to the data study or the speed bump hump issue, I could answer those, and Director Bailey is here also. He could answer any questions you'd have, too.
Trustees, questions?
I know in the memo, it talked about that the speed bumps had to be taken out for snow removal. Do the tables also have to be taken out?
Well, the manufacturer told me the tables, they can't have permanent tables, and you can, you know, if you're doing the, if you're doing the device where you're, because you can buy it without the data collection. So all these devices can be permanent, or you can buy specific devices that are removable from place to place throughout the village. They offer both types. So each of these devices can be either permanent or moved throughout the village, except for when you're moving them throughout the village, the Director could probably explain, you have to, you know, you're bolting these into the roadway again, and then his crews have to know where they're marked, and when he's pulling them out of the street, those holes have to be filled back in. And one of the problems that the installer told, or the other chiefs told me that had this, is once they put it in a neighborhood, they don't want it to leak. So, for example, the towns that I talked to that did it for like a 90-day study, they put it on 100 block of whatever street, and they left it there, and the residents thought it was very successful. Most of the residents that, for example, Oak Park that I talked to extensively, they prefer the humps, because the bumps, they don't, you know, the residents hear the cars going at midnight, the cars bouncing off the road, and the mufflers falling off the cars. So most of the residents prefer the smoother, he found the hump than the real big one. But one of the problems is, is that they don't want it removed. So Oak Park did trials where they had it like for 90 days, they'd take it out, move it somewhere else, and the place that it was at, it accomplished its goal, and they didn't want it removed. And they had a lot of problem moving it from this block to this block to this block. And that was part of Oak Park's cul-de-sac study. So they were very, you know, very weary of moving it around the village, because they only bought two for each end of each block, and then they would put it for four months here and four months over here, but then the problem returned to the place that they took it out for four months. So Oak Park decided not to have those. They did the cul-de-sacs that you see off of Austin Boulevard, and I'll go into that a little bit later, but they don't, they don't give out the speed bumps and speed humps, because they chose to go the cul-de-sac route. So it, say, to be assured, either of them, we can purchase permanent ones and we can purchase portable ones.
So my question is, is it the portable ones? And let me just understand if you, if me, is when Oak Park used them, and they were there for 90 days, or, I, my assumption would be that the people that frequent that, you know, that route as either a cut-through or whatever, then changed their habits and move elsewhere? And...
You know, he didn't have an opinion on that. What he did have, the guy we dealt with is just retired from Oak Park, but he said what he did, what they did, is the residents that lived there loved it. Whether it reduced the amount of cut-through traffic, the residents that lived on those blocks certainly think it did. Oak Park, did they do follow-up studies to see if it did that? No, because they ended up going the route where if you've been down Austin Boulevard, you've seen either have one way out or they have the complete cul-de-sacs. And that's where they were doing the studies. So they, there was no follow-up there, at least from them, as to see whether, when they moved it, they just decided, when they did that test, they never went back to it. The residents were happy that they closed down the access to Austin Boulevard completely. This is a little different situation, because, you know, closing down Fairbanks Road is not in the mix here. But even when I met with the residents and the Director met with the residents, there was some talk of making it no right turn between certain times, pretty much similar to what you see on Lionel Road. You know, would we consider that, meaning we as a village, not just me? I wasn't for that idea. I told the residents when I was there, because the one on Lionel goes back many, many years and had a specific study done of rear-end accidents that were being done on Ogden Avenue. There were a lot of rear-end accidents from westbound Ogden to Lionel from cars avoiding the Harlem Avenue railroad tracks. So it was put there for a very specific reason. And those of you that remember when we tried to change that a while ago, they wanted to lynch me. So, and that was just a study, and that was just to see how it would work to allow more access to the village from Lionel. Because I think a real concern, and even this Board has expressed before to me, is that where did, you know, Berry Point and First Avenue are the really two only main thoroughfares coming into the village off Ogden Avenue. You could take Lionel, but it's only, Lionel is restricted. And, you know, Miller Road obviously is one way, so, you know, do we want to restrict traffic more coming northbound into the village from Ogden Avenue? That's really a concern, too.
Chief, what happens whether it's on Fairbank or another part of the town when you put some kind of speed deterrent, like a bump or a hump on the road? Does traffic then go somewhere else? In other words, are you just moving the problem from one street to another?
Yes, you can, you can. See, that's what a professional traffic study, you know, I'm a proponent of that, and I was going to get into that a little bit more, but we'd see if that's a displacement. I don't know. Would the speed bump slow cars down there? It may very well do that. It may. Is it displacing a certain amount of cars to Berry Point and maybe Fairbank, the other Fairbank or other? That's a possibility, too, but I don't have the engineering expertise to say whether that's happening, but certainly the studies that I got from other agencies, at times it does displace traffic other places. That's why some municipalities are reluctant to do that. So it can. Now, can I say to the Board here it does? I don't have the study to back that up, and so I would, I would be giving you anecdotal information, but I tell you that there's a possibility it would displace traffic to other roads. I think if people are avoiding Fairbanks 100, which the residents would want them to do, that traffic would have to go somewhere. Where would it go? It would have to go to Berry Point. And maybe the argument could be made, that's where the traffic should go? I don't know that all the residents on Berry Point Road would agree with that, or what would the volume be there? You know, that's one of my ideas to doing a traffic study for the village is, and even the traffic studies, even the manager could maybe speak to this, too, is we, the traffic engineers can do specific studies for neighborhoods, they could do a village-wide study, and I mean a village-wide study that's focused. We would give them the parameters. It's not like, here, go study the whole village and come back with this, you know, $30,000, $40,000 plan. We would, we would work with an engineering firm to say, this is what we want, and I think they would tailor their report to what the village expected. And maybe am I wrong, but I think the manager might be able to speak more to that. Would you like to address that, Jessica?
Yes. Actually, I spoke with Burke Engineering, who is our village engineer, and they do work with KALOAA, who actually did the study for District 96, and we did a collaborative effort with them regarding the traffic flow around Hauser over on Aitkinside and also Woodside, parking issues, things of that sort. And basically, they've, KALOAA, most recently, has done studies for the village of Mount Prospect, Downers Grove, and also La Grange. There's different structures, and it's based on what we want the scope of services to be. You can tailor it where it's neighborhood, so if, for Fairbanks, for example, you would look at Fairbanks, and then they would look at surrounding streets. So if they're looking at certain traffic calming mechanisms for Fairbanks, then they would also see how that would impact all their surrounding streets if those particular mechanisms were implemented. There is also a track, a village-wide traffic study, and it's not every single street in Riverside. As the Chief said, it is actually tailored. When they looked at our map, they said, well, do you want to look at even Harlem, First Avenue, or Ogden? And they said, no, we're primarily concerned with residential and the hub of our community. And they said, well, we have pinpointed 25 different areas that we would recommend studying. And we would do a tiered approach, so it would be the less severe calming mechanism all the way up to a third potential option for given areas within the village. So you could try the least severe. The most severe would be potentially closure or a cul-de-sac perhaps. And they provide those different actions to the village going forward. So it would basically be a design that we could then rely on for future traffic calming mechanisms. They would do traffic counts. They would not only do that, they would do plate recognition to find out if there is through traffic where these people are coming from, so they can target what streets they're utilizing within Riverside. So the scope of services can vary with regard to a village-wide traffic study.
Chief, if you looked at the 100-block block of Fairbank, where on that block would you put such a device? Would you put it up near the bridge? Would you put it at the other end of the block?
The roadway device itself?
Yeah, I mean, would you put it in the middle of the block? I mean...
You know, discussing it with Director Bailey, where we talked about it amongst ourselves with the...
I mean, where would be the most effective, if we only put one speed bump? I don't see that as being a big deterrent.
No, they recommend, the company recommended two speed bumps, so one...
One at either end of the street?
Yeah, either end. It'd have to be a certain amount off the turn, so whether you're turning to come into town or out of town, but they recommended two. The Director told me our streets are about 19 to 20 feet. Would you want to address that in what they told you about the installation?
Fairbank, Fairbank Road, 100-block pavement width is 21 feet. These speed bumps, speed humps are very basic rudimentary devices. They lay on the street, they're typically held in into the pavement with spikes. If they're going to be applied to a concrete street, there's anchors and lag bolts are used, but at any rate, they're just spiked into the pavement. We would certainly only have them as far as the pavement is, not going into the gutter. And they come in speci- And they come in, tend to come in specific lengths, six-foot lengths, three-foot lengths, so you just come up with a combination of pieces to equal twenty-one feet, spiking into the ground. From our standpoint, from a public works standpoint, the most significant concern would be snow removal. If they're left in year-round, we would lift the plows, have to remember to lift the plows as we go over them, which tends to leave a deposit of snow. Same practice as when we go over railroad tracks, you know, plow over the railroad tracks. And if, you know, that's the most significant issue with the wintertime, or I think there's a good chance inevitably a plow driver would forget to lift his plow, you know, in the heat of the battle, out there fifteen hours plowing snow or something like that. But again, they might just be uprooted because they're just held by spikes and might be matter spiking them back into the ground. Certainly if they're removed and reinstalled in the same area with these, you know, spikes going into the pavement, there's going to be an eventual deterioration of that pavement. It certainly would have to be sealed after the spikes are removed. Some kind of sealant would have to be put in there. And, you know, one or two bumps or humps is not a big deal for the department as far operationally, it's not a big project. It's if you got, you know, ten or fifteen of these things throughout the village, then it becomes a project to, well, get them and then reinstall them. But again, very simple devices, there's nothing complicated about them at all.
Other comments, questions?
I also would remind you that I looked up the state statute and we have to do signage with a certain footage. Each, each speed hump or bump has to have a sign, a minimum footage from it that says "Speed bump ahead," so we'd have to install two new signs on each side. But I think one thing, I think I really want to interject is the board should keep in mind is that we will definitely have requests for more of these devices throughout the villages. I've already had them. That's why I'm a proponent of what the manager just spoke about, some type of limited traffic study that could give us a plan in the years to go as to where these devices really should be put in, if that's the way the board wants to go in the future.
Have you seen, chief, in your experience with these in other areas, is it something where if, they have to be in succession, otherwise people go over one and then they just take off? Especially if we're talking about these bumps being well over a thousand feet apart, you know, I mean...
Yeah, I have, the communities I visited that have them, all, McCook, for example, I went out, took, visited with the ones that are in McCook, they're over by their library firehouse, if you've ever been that way. Theirs are actually asphalt and cement, I don't know if you've ever driven over there. They're always in successions of two, almost every community. Now, the length they put them in can be determined by the village. There's not the state statue about the length, it's about the signage. McCooks are very close together, if you've ever driven over there. Some of the other towns that have them, Elmwood Park is an example, they have some, they're farther apart. They're usually at the ends of the blocks, in a little bit from when you make the turn, but they're at the end of the blocks. You know, my idea would be if the village goes with these some, there is to put them relatively not too far away, because you just go over one, then you keep speeding, so you probably have to get to another one where you're going to slow down again. So I, I would, I would not recommend you just use one single one if the board chooses to go that direction, that there be at least two.
Mr. Paul?
Yes, I was going to mention the signs because I assume that was essential or critical that they be, that it be signed, and of course that means two more signs.
Yes.
And we've, we have made efforts to reduce the number of signs. Now, having said that, public safety is far more important than the number of signs that we have, so I think this is a, you know, traffic calming is an accepted practice, the use of these types of facilities is common. But there are unintended consequences from my experience. I've surveyed residents who've had these put in front, on their block, and everybody who doesn't live right in front of it loves them, and everyone who lives right in front of the hump hates it because they get sick of the screeching brakes and the accelerating cars, and the ones that don't do that go over it too fast, and there's a loud noise when they, when they hit it. And so for my limited experience, I haven't done this a lot, but people who live in front of them, they say, well, why don't you put it over there? You know, I think it goes over there. It'd be perfect, right down, you know, next door. So the residents in each of these neighborhoods who, who want to see this, and I think it's a good idea, don't get me wrong, I think we should pursue a traffic study and see if we want to use these. But residents need to be aware, there are consequences, and, you know, if, if, if the study says it should be in front of your house, you know, you may not like that, but, you know, it's got to be in somebody's, in front of somebody's house. So, anyway, I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention, and just, I guess, conclude by saying that I, I do support the idea of doing a traffic study and looking into this.
Other questions?
Is that one of our bicycle routes in the 100-block of Fairbank?
I don't think so. I've seen, I've seen the arrow sign.
Did they go through...
Yeah.
Are there signs on, on, on Fairbank, bicycle route signs that I...
I think it's Scottswood.
Is there?
Bloomingdale and Scottswood, you know, around that way. Bloomingdale to Fairbank and then over the bridge.
I have a hard enough time riding my bike, I don't need a speed bump.
Chief, with regard to the, to the data collection device, because we also have the calming trailer?
Yes.
I mean, have we, have we looked at, at the data from the calming, because the calming trailer has been all around...
Yes.
...the village for a long time.
Yes.
How, how does, because if, if Fairbank is at the eighty-five percentile, do we know how that compares with other streets that we've had the calming trailer on?
We don't, because that device does not, is not sophisticated as, the electronics in that device, which we also got a grant on, does not take into account the same type of data that the J-Mar box collects. It will collect data, like how many cars go one direction. It won't do both directions because the, you know, the sign is facing one direction, but it doesn't store. We can get some information from it within like ten days or so, but because it's a standalone device, it's not, like the J-Mar device is hooked right up into our police station, into the laptops, the officers can go on the desktop and call up the data. It's, it's much more sophisticated. The, the speeds calming device is a basic, you know, you're going too fast, start flashing at you, catches some data, but only stores that for a very short period of time, because it stores it in that unit itself. So, you know, we'd have to go there, put a thumb drive in or something to try to collect that data, but it's very much elementary type of data. It was never intended to really collect that. That, when we purchased that, it was just to put out there and move around the residence, neighborhoods, so the residents could have another device that would help reduce speeding.
So, short of doing the thirty thousand dollar traffic study, would it be worth taking the device we have and putting it at different locations in the village to, to see what kind of comparison we have? I mean, if, if we were to put that device around the different areas of the village, say, over a period of several months, and, and it came back and we found that, that we were in that eighty-five percentile range that, that you're calling the gold standard, would, would, would these, would these devices be warranted?
Well, the J-Mar box, the more sophisticated one we just got, we could certainly move that around the village. It's a box that can hang on, gas lights, street lights, we can move that around and do studies. The Fairbank study, I think, was eight days, the recent one. I mean, we could, we could pick roadways and do the same timeframe, so say we do eight days on this road. That, that data will give the same data that's in your memo. The one, the calming device one, I wouldn't use at all, the one that, the trailer. But the J-Mar, if the board wants it to get a better, clearer picture of maybe five or six other streets in town, you know, that'll take us another two months to do, to collect the data, but that device can be very portable.
But I guess my question is, is if you, if you did that, let's say for the sake of argument, you did that, would you still need the traffic study? Would you still need the professional analysis of the broader?
I know, I believe we would, and, and my reason is that the broader study will give us the cut-through traffic, and that's the license plate recognition. It'll give us the streets surrounding the street that we're doing the study on. So are we actually pushing traffic to other locations? Well, the traffic engineers can study that, and these traffic engineers are far much more data-driven, and that's their profession. Because what I'm doing is taking data from the box, converting that into some charts, and then converting a cover memo to the manager and board detailing what the J-Mar printed out. I think that you would find that a professional traffic engineering study would give this board a much more wider range of options and would give you a plan that maybe you could use as far as ten years ahead to say that, you know, you know, here's where we want to start. It's kind of like the sewer study that was done, you know, what's the worst part of the village? Out of these twenty locations we studied, here's the worst one, this is where we should put some efforts in, and then if we want it, then here's the next street. And this could be backed up by an independent professional traffic engineer that has no bias of any type at all, just comes in, follows the protocol given to them by the village, and is able to give us some type of professional document for us to use far beyond one or two years. I mean, I see this study being used, you know, ten years from now, because it'll lay out different, as the manager said, it could lay out twenty different locations in the village. And certainly we could scale that back, because obviously the more, I assume, the more locations we do, the more expensive the study will be, but we could scale that down to the ten most areas that we think we have issues at. And one big point that the manager made that I totally agree with is I get calls all the time about cut-through traffic, and it's pretty anecdotal. I, I believe there's cut-through traffic, but I can't go out and run all the license plates. I think an engineering study could tell us, you know what, out of these, like say for this, out of six hundred and fifty-five cars, four hundred of them registered out of the village of Riverside between, and they, they came between three PM and seven PM. Well, that's cut-through traffic during rush hour. So it would give us real hard data of what we're really looking at as far as traffic patterns go.
So I think it's your opinion that even with, also with regard to the cul-de-sac question, you would, you would need a similar study?
Yeah, I, I would, I would, I support that. Yeah, I would support, you know, whatever size study we wanted to do, I would support. I would support that because I, I believe that they, they have a wealth of information that we can use for traffic enforcement and the director can use for traffic devices, and that, you know, it's a public document we can share with our residents to show, you know, that this is what's really happening. This is a real thorough professional study that's been done. And, you know, I don't know that they range that expense, some of them could probably be as low as ten thousand dollars up to thirty or forty, depending on what you want to tell, what you want to have the engineers do for you. And I think for a study that could last us ten years and beyond, that would be very economically feasible, in my opinion.
The, I mean, the preliminary, preliminary information that the village manager received is for the twenty-five locations, we're looking at around a thirty thousand dollar study. What are, what are, what are your opinions, trustees, about, about considering a formal traffic study like this?
I'd be in favor of it.
I don't think we really have the information to, to, I, I'm reluctant to just put in speed bumps at different places and that, because like trustee Sussman said, is that just moving it to somewhere else? And I understand that this is important for these residents, but it's also important for the residents on Berry Point and on other roads, and I just don't feel, I just feel like we're doing something without the necessary information, without a study to actually see what, what we have and what would be the consequences of action.
And I, I would, I would think that a study would make the police force more efficient. So if you find out that the majority of your problems happen between, you know, four and seven, then, then you can tailor your, your patrol between those times, and that makes, that makes, instead of sitting there from, you know, nine, that makes you much more, you know, much more efficient in your, in your job. So I, I would, I would say when I came in here, I wasn't thrilled about spending thirty thousand dollars on something like this, but I would, I would think that it is well warranted. Because, you know, Berry Point's a problem, but so is Robinsonport, you know? That, that's a curved street. People come flying off Ogden Avenue, or off of Harlem Avenue down that street, or off of Delaplane. We've already had an accident there several years ago. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of issues in town, I think we need to get to the bottom of it.
Just one comment, I think, I'm looking at these, these issues, the, the study becomes most important if you're considering putting in these calming devices than if you decide not to. Because you need to, if you put them in somewhere without a study, it's very difficult to draw distinctions with any other area without an objective basis to do that. And I think that's what you're getting at, chief, when you talk about there are all these other requests. And once you're, if you have potentially twenty areas, if there's nothing that delineates distinctions between them, you're going to be pretty stuck with putting them everywhere, and then that creates issues for public works. With a study, you'll know the exact differences between them, and then can prioritize and have an objective reason to say yes to some but no to others. Without that, you put, you put them in, and then if the study's done later, you might find you've got bigger problems than you thought. If you're inclined not to do this at all, it's not that big an issue, but it's if you're considering it, that's when it becomes important. It's just like putting stop signs in. You put them in one place, and without a basis to say this is why, how could you, you know, how do you say no somewhere else? It's not fair.
I certainly would not want to proceed with traffic calming of any sort without doing a study first, because the potential for unintended consequences is just too great. You have to study it before you consider doing any kind of traffic calming. You know, I'm, certainly, you know, from, from what I hear on this particular street, there seems to be a traffic issue. I've not heard a lot from other residents in the village that they have concerns about cut-through traffic or speeding traffic or anything, but if that's, you know, seems to be an issue in the village, I, I would go along with doing a study. I would want to do an RFP and have, get proposals from more than just one traffic firm, because I know there's a lot of good firms out there, and hopefully we could get a, get a better price.
We have to do an RFQ because it's for...
RFQ, right.
...engineering services.
Ms. Sussman?
Yes, I'm fine with, I think we should do the traffic study as well, and I was going to say what Doug said, that I think we should do an RFQ.
But with RFQs, it's based on qualifications, not cost. So I just want you to...
But at some point, we could still...
You could take into account cost, yeah. You just, you just don't have to take the lowest, you could include all the other subjectives.
Right. I mean, we could still get the lowest qualified bidder in the end. That's, that's would be my goal.
So would your suggestion then to be to put a, like a, a holding, a line item in the budget for 2015?
Yes.
And while this process is going forward?
Yes.
So I think we have a consensus. Did you, given, given that consensus by the board, did you still want to discuss the cul-de-sacs, or would you like to wait until we have the data?
Um, I could, the cul-de-sac issue, I could wait. It was really, we talked to the Oak Park engineer extensively on that, because Oak Park has forty separate closures in this town, not just the ones on Austin Boulevard. So we, he gave us a great deal of direction on how Oak Park handled theirs, but we did also speak to other communities, Elmwood Park being one of them, Chicago, because there's some of those in Beverly, and a few others. So I can't wait, if you want me to address the cul-de-sac issue when that comes back, because maybe this will have more to do with. And the other only memo that I had in there for you was an update on our programs, and that's just in there to show trustees, the manager, and our elected officials as to what we've been doing so far. The roads that you see I put in there is targeted. Those, we did more than that, but those roads are the ones the residents wrote the emails on, or sent me voicemails on, that they wanted more traffic enforcement on. And those included Woodside, Berry Point, Fairbank, St. Mary's School principal requested, Hauser Central School, Delaplane residents called me, Addison Road, First Avenue because of the high school, they made that request, it was really first in Ridgewood. Harlem Avenue came from some of the business owners in combination to speed enforcement and parking enforcement, and East Quincy, and residents in the area of Long Common and Olmsted had made, I mean, Long Common and Shetstone specifically wanted us to sit there. And just this past week, I have a two-week detail going at Selbourn and Long Common due to a, a letter that was forwarded to me from the manager to address a traffic issue up there. I just completed sending that gentleman a letter responding to it, but we'll be up there for the next two weeks. So we do more than that, but those, I just wanted to point out the ones that residents have called me on. And kind of just to give you a breakdown of what we've done so far, in the village, we've done forty-seven traffic details, just in the first division alone, it's not just their area, the first division, it could be Fairbank, Berry Point, Scottswood. We've done twenty-one details in 2014. We've had three hundred and six actual complaints at the police department about reckless driving and/or speeding vehicles in the village in 2014. speeding vehicles in the village in 2014. I instructed my dispatchers that if somebody calls to complain and they even want to speak to me and it's a traffic complaint, they're going to log it into our computer system so we can have a record of the residents that call and location. And then we've done our intensified traffic enforcement detail six times and we're doing it again in November. And we've had about 11,400 calls for service so far. And the reason I mention that is because sometimes the residents that call me think we have more officers than we do. And the staff that we have has to juggle between averaging 36 calls for service a day, handling criminal complaints, auto accidents, doing specialized traffic enforcement unless it's on a grant. They don't authorize specialized traffic enforcement in most cases for overtime unless it's being covered by the grant. Now, we do have a $28,000 IDOT grant this year that does cover interior enforcement within the village, not just Harlem, First Avenue. So some of that traffic detail of IDOT is picking up that money. Even though these aren't IDOT streets, IDOT opened up their grant to allow us to do enforcement in the village for seat belts, child safety. But that doesn't mean that when you're on those grants, you can't stop people for speeding and other violations. So that's the first time IDOT has opened those grants to non-IDOT streets. Usually, they just limit them to IDOT enforcement. So I just wanted the board to have a general review of the initiatives that have taken place so far.
Any further questions for the chief or Mr. Bailey? Okay. I know we have some residents here from Fairbank that, would you like to speak with us?
My name's Eileen Bryant. I'm a resident at 160 Fairbank Road. I'm a mother of two children under six years old. I'm also a licensed attorney and a concerned resident. So I'd like to thank the Board of Trustees, President Sells, village manager Frances, thank you for this opportunity. I, and I'd like to preface my statement with a sincere thank you and appreciation to the chief and the police department for the measures that they have taken thus far. We see the efforts they've taken, we appreciate it, we know that they have limited resources. They're, they're doing what they can and we really appreciate that. We also really appreciate the thorough research on the options and the speed humps. We also would like to, speaking for the residents on Fairbank and Berry Point, we'd also like to express that we wholeheartedly agree that there should be a village-wide study. 100%, we're not opposed to that. It makes sense, it, it's necessary, and it needs to be done. It's long overdue. But with all that said, and again, I'm speaking for residents on both Fairbank and Berry Point, we see this as a current crisis. Not just a problem, not just an issue, it's a current crisis that we're asking for your support for immediate measures, not just a study that might take place in 2016. We need, we would like to see actions taken as soon as possible. And I'll explain why, why we see this as a current crisis. And I'll point you to what we already have, which is the traffic study that was already done. We have the study already done. A lot of you are saying we can't take measures until a study is done. We have a study that has been completed and we have the data for Fairbank. So instead of skimming over percentages and 85th percentiles, what I would like to focus your attention on is the specific data and the fact that there is a sheer volume of dangerous drivers on our two streets, Fairbank and, and Berry Point. And the reason why is because possibly there is a lot of cut-through, but regardless of the reason, we have the data. So if I were to put it this way, if you were to hear this, if you were to hear that there were over 14,000 drivers in a one-year period on a quiet residential street going over the speed limit, what would you think of that volume? 14,000 drivers in a year. And I'm not just talking about drivers going one or two miles per hour over the 20 mile per hour speed limit. I'm talking about drivers going well above the speed limit that they would be subject to a traffic citation, which would not be dismissed in court. So the chief did indicate over 11 miles per hour. So to be exact, I'll give you the numbers. In the 10-day period, it was a 10-day period of the study, the data collection box recorded 395 drivers going over the stated speed limit. That translates to 1,224 drivers, dangerous drivers, in a month. That translates to over 14,400 drivers, dangerous drivers, in one year. 14,417. But even more concerning is the fact that there were 10 drivers in this 10-day period recorded as going over 46 miles per hour. So again, 20 mile per hour speed limit, going 46 miles per hour, with six of them driving over 65 miles per hour, which is concerning because if you look at the report, it says 65 and then a greater than sign. They could have been going 70 for all we know, according to the data collection box. So that's six drivers in a 10-day period going over 65 miles per hour on our quiet residential road. That translates, that translates to 18 drivers per month, 216 drivers in a year driving over 65 miles per hour. Now, I don't know about you, but I equate 65 miles per hour to the Eisenhower Expressway, not to quiet little Fairbank, where there are children playing, children walking to school, pedestrians, bike riders, people innocently walking their dogs. So my main question to all of you, with the spirit of wanting to work together, is do we want to be proactive or reactive? And by reactive, I, I very much hesitate to say this, but do we only take action after someone has been struck and killed by one of these dangerous drivers? So the, the numbers in this report do not lie. If you were to only focus, you know, regardless of the overall numbers and percentiles, if you were to only focus on the drivers going over 65 miles per hour, that's 216 drivers in a year. The risk is there, so we are all on notice, that the risk is there, and it's an exponentially higher risk based on these numbers. Higher risk for a fatality on our streets. So the measures have, there have been measures put into place. We appreciate the, the patrol cars, but as the chief mentioned, as soon as you turn right on Berry Point, or sorry, Fairbank from the bridge, if they see a patrol car there, they won't speed up like they do, up to 65 miles per hour. We have, on Berry Point, there is a speed radar sign, and Patrick will speak on that. It hasn't done much to reduce the drivers, dangerous drivers on that street. So what we as a group are respectfully requesting, and we would like to see some support and maybe some concrete action to reduce the number of the dangerous drivers. Again, we appreciate measures taken thus far, but nothing has stemmed the tide of dangerous drivers that we have seen. So what we're proposing and in line with the chief, we're proposing speed humps for a trial period on our streets. Use our street as a, as a trial to see if it decreases the number of dangerous drivers. Use this data that has already been collected to see if speed humps put in will lead to less than 14,000 dangerous drivers in a year. And as the fire chief and the director of public works have said in their memos, that these speed humps would have, would have minimal impact to their departments and to emergency responses. So I would just like to say, we're all on notice, we have an issue here. I can't let my children ride their bikes or walk on the street without worrying about someone zipping by at 65 miles per hour. So Patrick, I thought he would be next to talk about Berry Point issues.
Thank you, Eileen. Well, my name's Patrick Warne. I live on 129 Berry Point Road, and I've lived there for two years. I work downtown, I ride my bike downtown, and so I, I have a five-year-old daughter. She went to that school across the street. So I, I'm intimately familiar with the problem on Berry Point is that if there's 650 cars going by, on, on, on Fairbank, there's probably 10,000 cars going by every day on Berry Point. And most of that cars are not, they don't live here. I know that for a fact. And so they put in the solar panel speedometer. I, I would say most cars, I would say two-thirds of the cars, still going by at over 35 miles an hour. And maybe the first three months after they put that in, I saw people braking when they approached and they saw the light, the, the numbers. But now they don't even bother because there's no citations given for going way over the speed limit. It's 20 miles an hour. And so, so since there's no consequences, it's the same 10,000 cars going by every day, they know there's no enforcement, so there's no really deterrent to slow down. And I can tell you for a fact that I feel physically threatened when I mow my lawn in the front yard and mowing that strip near the, near this street because cars don't go by very fast. And sometimes they throw trash and have to pick up broken bottles in my front yard. And I don't allow my daughter to play in the front yard. It's just dangerous out there. And, you know, sometimes I ride my bike coming home, I try to make a left turn, I have my hand out, the car's passing by me on my left and trying to run me over. At one time, I was going to work on my bike, the car pulled over behind me at a stop sign and told him to get off the road. So I just feel physically threatened living that street with cars going by and just pay on, no, no attention to people who live there. When I back out, when I'm trying to get out of my driveway, people saw me coming out, they speed up, they don't slow down. So it's the same people. It's the same 10,000 cars that going by, so I, I just don't understand why we can't turn that street into a one-way street or putting speed bumps there, slowing the traffic, reduce the volume, because you can't have a two-way traffic and you have cars parked there at the same time. You know, something has to give. You can't have, you know, the, the, just, the street is not wide enough. I have friends' cars, mirror got clipped. I know for a fact that three cars that got damaged because cars going by without slowing down. And so I, 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 I think it's, something needs to be done. I've lived for two years and I really appreciate the, what the village has to offer, but living on that street has been a nightmare. So I, I deeply regret actually for picking that location. I mean, I, I, I think there's something we could, we could do to improve the traffic to, you know, I, I, I think that, you know, it's, it's not meant for a major thoroughfare, for traffic cut-through during rush hour. And, and if they can save five minutes, I, I, I just really think that should be done at our expense because we pay our property taxes, they don't. And that's just not fair. So I, I get very emotional about this and I, I think the village should do something. And so thank you for your time.
Jeff Clinton, 120 Fairbank. First, I want to thank you guys for your time. Chief, I want to reinforce what you said, thank you for all of your efforts. Couple of things that I just want to point out. One, from a Fairbank perspective, we are not concerned with volume of traffic on our block specifically. We're concerned with the speeding traffic, the reckless drivers that have a unique intent to beat the traffic on Berry Point. Back to, there's so much traffic coming in that way that it backs up. So another thing that all of you who've lived here for a long time will know, the only access point to the village on the south side is Berry Point. All the other access points along Ogden have been adjusted and modified for safety. Chief mentioned that they tried to change policy on one street online. Somebody said something, they went back to what it was before. Again, safety issue. So we are taking the burden of all the traffic coming in on Ogden, and we're asking you guys for help. We're asking you to help our safety issue. A year ago, longer than a year ago, I sent a note to President Sells, the chief, anybody that will listen, said, we have a problem. Since then, we've done two traffic studies. We've had the calming trailer. They've picked up and done far more police activity there, and we still have an issue. Again, we have explained, two different meetings with President Sells, with the police, to explain our unique situation. Only access point on the south side of town, the people come over the bridge, they see six people, six cars stacked up. They say, okay, there's six cars in front of me, I'm going to beat that traffic. They turn right on Fairbank. Their intent is to beat that traffic. So they hammer it the second they turn the corner. And now when you pair that with our street, which is an uphill curve with 10 houses on it and eight of those houses have kids on it, the, there is a incredible chance for something bad to happen. Mentioned, again, curve, throws her eye towards the park, towards the river, and you have all these kids living and wanting to cross the street and go to the park. So in that year period, we've done this, we have data, as we mentioned before, that shows we have a problem. Again, we've had conversations, countless emails to try and do something. Nothing has been done. We're asking for your help. We have data to be able to support what we're asking for. We want speed bumps to be able to stop and pacify this traffic, not only on our street, also on Berry Point. Because again, we're the only access point and we're taking the entire burden of all the traffic coming in and we're asking for your help. We want action, we want something.
What did you say? Just as correction, trustee Collins, I want to make sure we're clear. Berry Point is an issue for us. It's not just what we want for, for Fairbanks. So when you were saying Fairbanks, I think that it may have been misinterpreted by some of you, that we weren't concerned about Berry Point. We're concerned about the entire village. This is not just a Berry Point Fairbank issue. In the past 30 days, I've done my own little personal campaign of talking to different people in different problem areas, and I have at least 200 people that are willing to send a petition saying that there needs to be some sort of change. And I think that I can continue to grow that the more people I talk to. But back to just some, just listening to say, first of all, thank you because I think that the response is much more positive than we were expecting coming in. We, we don't interpret the data the same as perhaps the chief, but that's okay because we sit there and we see the 14,000 cars driving by every day that are going 11 miles or higher. That's a little different because that was since you lowered it to 20 miles an hour, that's not 14,424 cars to be exact above that go 30 miles or faster on the street. Just a thought to trustee Paul's concerns on, on the speed bumps. And I get it, I mean, I, I hear you, you get someone driving down there in the middle of the night, you don't want to hear this or, this or happening. Nothing's going to be perfect, right? There's, there's nothing in this, nothing's ever going to be perfect. But sort of my thought is, is Berry Point is scary. I would never let my kid ride my, ride her bike, or she can't ride a bike, but I would never let her ride a, ride a bike around the block. I mean, under no circumstances, I wouldn't even let her walk down that street. It is vicious, Berry Point. I mean, to be perfectly honest with you, as much as I care about Fairbank, Berry Point's a way bigger issue. I mean, it's, it's scary. So just a thought, when, when someone mentioned the, the road bumps, you know, and then you think about Howser, for instance, right? So my niece Grace is in sixth grade. When I went there, there was 90 students in my class, and her class is like 250. That's 160 kids more than there were when I went there. Clearly, the traffic's, it's scary there. So maybe the speed humps do need to go in the areas where it is most dangerous, where there's kids, where people are clearly cutting through on Berry Point, Berry Point, not Woodside, but, but right in front of the school, in front of the church, in front of the different schools around. Maybe that's where you start with the speed bumps. You don't need, let's do the study. You don't need a study for logic, right? If there's kids coming out of the school, someone's going to get hit if, if we don't, if we don't improve, if we don't improve the condition. In regard to what I would, what I would want, if, you know, we can put the speed bumps on Berry Point. And again, this is just listening through today. Could we then do the no right turn at the bridge, right? So I know you want the no right turn. But, but if we do the no right turn at the bridge, but we, we might still be able to achieve our goals, right? People aren't cutting down Fairbank to try and get past, to try and get past the traffic on Berry Point, but people are also avoiding Berry Point, cutting through, going to Morton West High School or going to the 290 Expressway. longer to get from there to there, and their intent is to get somewhere faster. They're cutting through Riverside to avoid Harlem Avenue, the First Avenue, plain and simple. When I was seventeen years old, my dad started something called Safe Street. I sat with my brother at the corner of Berry Point and Millbridge with a clicker, and he told me to count the number of cars that came through that didn't have Riverside stickers on it. It was brutal, but I was making four or five dollars an hour, so I didn't care, right? And we did that, and it was, I don't remember the exact numbers, I'm sure if I scurried through my mom's attic, I could find them, but it was like in the ninety percentile of cars that weren't from Riverside. I mean, it was, and my dad, of course, was trying to start this campaign and do something similar to what we're doing, trying to do now. But the problem's been going on for, that's twenty years ago, twenty-five years ago. So this isn't just a problem today, it's a problem before. And I'm sure that there's going to be some concerns from residents who are going to say, "Well, we can't put speed bumps up because, you know, the village was designed by, you know, all the stuff that's going to come from the design of the town, this or that." Let's remember that the town was designed when there was horse and buggies. I mean, this is a family-oriented village now with little kids running around and those cars driving sixty-five miles an hour down our streets. We can't wait for another situation where a kid gets creamed and killed. If we do that, we all fail. So we see the work, there's, it's a common interest, I think everyone wants the safety of our children improved, but, I mean, listening to you speak with your passion, you're right. I have a very dear friend that just moved down to Berry Point, and so I go there regularly. It is a scary street. I mean, it is a scary, scary street, way scarier than Fairbank. I actually feel bad for you, that you live on that street, because I would never, I would never live on that street with a child. I don't even feel comfortable walking my dog on that street. So again, could we, because we have the data study, we already have this data study, could we start today rather than wait until 2016? Put speed bumps on Berry Point, I think that's where we're really going to speed, and then to avoid people racing past Berry Point like they're doing now, do a no right turn or do something to slow it, or put speed bumps on Fairbank as well. You can put it in front of my house, I don't care, I'll sign a document saying I won't call and complain about the speed bump being there. I just want to be somewhere safe, that's all I want. And again, it's not just that area. Driving down Woodside, I mean, or driving past the school, someone's going to get killed. It's only a matter of time, and then we're all going to have ourselves to blame. That's how I feel. So, is there any questions for me? Because I think that we've said a lot, the chief said a lot, can you guys throw questions our way on what some of our personal concerns are? Some of these people can speak, but I just think that that might be helpful. Do you have any questions for us?
Mr. Steve?
No.
Looks like no. Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir, please.
George Zickman, I'm at 150 Fairbank, and I know for a fact that for twenty-five years, this situation has existed, but it had been ignored. And it seems to me that you're going to sort of ignore it again. You're going to wait until something happens. Today alone, sitting in my living room, watching cars, three of them go by at over sixty miles an hour, is a little bit strange when it's a residential street. You're talking about different ways that other people will be driving, the river is going to keep that from happening. There's just two streets that those people are going to be using that are speeding and driving like idiots. So I hope something can be done before something really happens. I've called the police in years past and said that there's terrible speeding going on, and they said, "Well, write it down," and that's all that's ever happened. Now you're doing studies, and still nothing is happening. You need speed bumps to stop all this mess. The other month, I was in a traffic jam on Harlem going to the airport. I turned down a street prior to Archer because I needed to pick somebody up at Midway, and I noticed that this blue-collar community, and I don't know what the community is, if it's Summit or whatever, that every single block has two speed bumps. They're not these strange metal humps, but they're graduated cement that go off and down. It slows down the traffic, and yes, there are signs, but if they can afford to have speed bumps in a blue-collar community, there is no reason that something can't be done in this wealthy community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zickman. Any other comments on this issue?
I hate to even say this, but what about speed cameras?
Currently in Illinois, speed cameras are illegal, except that state police can use them in construction zones on the highways.
What about like in Chicago, like at Berry Point?
Well, Chicago has an exception for school zones for speeding, but that's, even in Chicago, that's the only exception right now.
They have one for park districts.
Yes, park districts do. But there is legislation that's been in Springfield for two years to get speeding cameras like they have the red light cameras, and it's failed miserably because people don't like, the general public doesn't even like the red light cameras. So I think you've seen that municipalities are taking out the red light cameras. The chief's organizations are supportive of the speed cameras, the state legislators have not been. Well, currently, no municipality can do that in Illinois, not even the home rule.
Except Chicago?
Yes. There's always an exception for Chicago.
You can kind of run that because I've actually thought about it as well, but I didn't mention that, just now real quickly. If, and we're not going to speak cameras, I'm going to say this, if they had those, just up to Fairbanks alone, it'd be one point four two four million dollars in revenue. I know they won't do it, but I'm saying that I thought the same thing you were saying. We can't do it, but.
Anything else? Okay. Thank you, chief, and thank you everyone for coming in. Moving on with public comment, would anyone else like to address this? Yes, ma'am, please.
Good evening. My name's Lois Kimmonen, 83 Groveland Avenue, and I'm representing the Olmsted Society. I think you haven't heard from us maybe in a little bit of a while, so I'm just here very briefly, and we had another very interesting discussion here. The Frederick Law Olmsted Society, I am a board member, we're about to elect some new board members, and I just have a couple of very quick highlights and accomplishments to inform you of as we have done in the past. Just summarizing what's been going on from the summer, fall of this year. Landscape workdays, there were eleven very well-attended workdays from April through October. That included Harrington Park, Swan Pond, the scout cabin, and an area along the riverbank near Gage. Volunteers, and we are fully a volunteer organization, for those of you who don't know. Volunteers planted sedges and grasses and removed invasive species such as garlic, mustard, and buckthorn. So that was a pretty exciting program. A relatively new program is called the Triangle Program. Turned out, it was a little bit controversial until we decided to involve the neighbors, and it's very important to involve neighbors, as we've seen here. We did launch a triangle program where we upgraded the triangle between Northwood and Aitkinside. We did have the buy-in from the neighbors in that area. We had many volunteers on one Saturday, I believe it was, including the neighbors, who planted two oak trees and seven shrubs, and it doesn't sound like much, but we hope to expand that program to not only beautify, but put in native species that also are acceptable to the surrounding community in these triangles. I think there are at least forty triangles in the community. Lectures, we also cooperated with the library, September fourteenth, September seventeenth, October first, as an example. I won't go into it because I know we had a pretty large discussion, trying to keep the comments very short. We had one on the passenger pigeon, which is an extinct species, followed by birdwalk in the, by the river. We had, that was September fourteenth, September seventeenth, another lecture on the Arcade Building, the history of the building, of course, that's a really important building here, beautiful building here in Riverside. And then we had October first, switching gears a little bit, a deep energy retrofit case study, talking about, it was actually a typical Chicago, too flat, but applies to Riverside as well, implementation of green technology. And now we're discussing possible future topics for future lectures, including considering a speaker for our annual meeting, which is open, I believe, to the general public on January sixteenth. Last but not least, we had several tours of the village, and this brings in people for a positive reason, not just speeding through, they actually walk or bike through the village to see various houses and other landmarks in the village, and those are conducted by, again, volunteers in the Olmsted Society. We had six tours throughout the summer season. We cooperated with Oak Park to have a right ride, right, meaning Floyd Wright, and there were two other special tours that were conducted. Next season, we're tentatively booking a group of sixty architects, I'm not sure where they're from, just heard this a couple of nights ago, coming by bus to see the village in April, and also planning to expand the bicycle tours in connection with Oak Park. So that's something fun and positive that the group is doing. Also, we'd like to extend thank yous to various departments and groups here in Riverside, one being the Chamber of Commerce and Parks and Recreation Department for cooperating with us during those tours. The Village Forester and Public Works Department were instrumental in helping during the parks upgrade and the triangle program I was mentioning. And also the library for hosting the lectures. We have lots of other things going on, but you can visit our website, you can even join the Olmsted Society, which I think I'm not supposed to be saying, but we are always looking for new members. So thank you very much, and we appreciate your listening and just helping to spread the word, and this is my first year as a board member, and it's been fun so far.
Thank you very much. Other public comment? Hearing none, we'll move on now to reports of village officers. First up is the village president's report, and first on the agenda is a motion to appoint Carrie Zaleski to the Parks and Recreation Board with a term to expire in 2015. So I'd ask for a motion and a second. Motion by Mr. Ballerine, second by Ms. Collins, any discussion? I can just say that Ms. Zaleski is a highly talented and skilled person, and she's going to bring a great deal to the Parks and Rec Board, and we look forward to having her serve on behalf of our village. So I'd ask you to please call the roll.
Trustee Sussman.
I'm Trustee Collins.
I.
Trustee Ballerine.
Hi.
Trustee Collins.
Hi.
Trustee Foley.
Hi.
Motion, Carrie's, welcome, Ms. Zaleski. The only other thing I have this evening is a general thank you to our residents on behalf of the board. We were very gratified to see the street bond referendum passed by a very healthy margin of seventy-seven percent on Election Day, and it just reiterates the dedication and the commitment that our residents have to this beautiful village and to the upkeep of our infrastructure and the beautification that matters so much to all of us. So we are looking forward to getting the resolution for these bonds on our meeting in December, and we hope to have them issued immediately after December eighteenth, when the votes are going to be certified. And you're going to see a lot of street repairs coming up in the next few years, so it's a good thing and a bad thing, it's like having your kitchen done. There's that period of time when it's torn up, but after it's done, it's all worthwhile. So thank you very much for your vote of confidence on behalf of our village. And that's all I have. Ms. Francis?
I have two quick items. I just wanted to make mention of the first winter farmer's market that took place yesterday. Future winter farmers markets will take place the first Wednesday of each month, and it's over at the train station, so please try to stop in. Also, if you want to get any updates with regard to the Riverside Farmers Market, the winter market anyway, to see what vendors will be in attendance, you can visit their Facebook page as well. One other additional item is the First Avenue Construction. Currently, IDOT is targeting mid-November as completion date, that's as of today's date. So barring any extreme bad weather, hopefully they'll be able to stay on that target.
What does that mean? No, I'm serious, I mean, what does that mean? What will happen?
Installation of...
The road will be done?
Yes, yes.
Will the sidewalk be back in?
Yes, they were pouring today, actually.
Okay, all right. I just wasn't sure what was going to be, wait until next spring or what was going to be done now?
No, apparently it's been pushed up in schedule.
Right.
Excellent. Next up is the approval of consent agenda. Are there any items anyone would like to have removed for discussion? Hearing none, I'd ask for a motion and a second for approval.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Foley.
Second.
Second by Ms. Sussman. Please call the roll.
Trustee Sussman.
I.
Trustee Collins.
I.
Trustee Collins.
I.
Trustee Foley.
I.
Motion, Carrie's. Next up, reports of departments, commissions, and trustee liaisons. Are there any liaison reports this evening? Hearing none, we'll move on to reports. I'm sorry? Yes?
I just wanted to give an update on the Halloween party we had at the water tower last week. We had over three hundred people there and a hundred and fifty children in costumes. This is along with the annual magic lighting of the historic water tower. Somehow, it just happens. So this is our biggest event ever, so, you know, good job to the rec department and thank you for all the participants.
Thank you, Mr. Ballerine. Next up is an annual ritual, a number of announcements concerning tax levies in public hearings, and Mr. Sussman, I believe you're going to handle the scores.
Okay. Good evening. What you have in front of you is an estimate of the 2014 property tax levy to be collected in 2015 and beyond. This estimate has to be announced at the board meeting, and if you look at the calculation, the net 2014 tax levy with the issuance of the 2014 general obligation bonds is five million, one hundred, five thousand, eight hundred. That, the amount is still subject to change because we have not gone through and issued the bonds yet. We won't really have final numbers until we have the actual amortization schedule that'll tell us what the 2015 bond payments will be. But once we have those numbers, we'll be able to finalize the actual tax levy, because we will be extending a levy for the servicing of these bonds beginning in 2015. The five million-plus tax levy represents an almost two percent increase over the prior year. That will be ratcheted down by Cook County because we are non-home rule, so the amount of the increase over prior year is limited to the lesser of either five percent or the increase in the Consumer Price Index. And the Consumer Price Index was only increased by one and a half percent, so that'll be ratcheted down to pretty much an increase of only that amount, one and a half percent. On the second page, I also should announce the Riverside Public Library estimated tax levy. They show an estimated tax levy of one million, forty-two thousand, five hundred, fifty-seven, and that represents approximately two-point-seven percent increase over the prior year, and I believe that the library board is scheduled to approve their tax levy, I believe it's on the agenda history, on November, I think it's November eleventh, I believe?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And so like I said, this is just an announcement, the board will, I mean, will be presenting the final numbers to the board at the November twentieth meeting for final adoption, scheduled for December fourth, 2014.
Thank you very much. Moving on to the announcement of public hearing for the budget ordinance.
Okay, so this is just an announcement that the, we will be holding a hearing for the... on the agenda history, on November, I think it's the November eleventh, I believe?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And so like I said, this is just an announcement. Uh, the board will, I mean, will be presenting the final numbers to the board, uh, at the November twentieth meeting, uh, for final adoption, uh, scheduled for December fourth, two thousand fourteen.
Thank you very much. And, uh, moving on to the announcement of public hearing for the budget ordinance.
Okay, so this is, uh, just an announcement that the, we will be, uh, holding a hearing for discussion, for public discussion of the two thousand fifteen, um, budget. Uh, and this hearing will be held on November twentieth, two thousand fourteen, so the public is, uh, welcome to attend, to ask any questions that they may have. And then on the same, on the same day, we'll also have a public hearing for the tax levy. Uh, once again, the public is invited to attend, to ask any questions, or to provide any public comment concerning the tax levy.
Um, also, we'd like to make mention that the budget document in its draft form will be available at the village if any residents would like to view it in advance of the public hearing.
Yeah, that'll be available, should be available this Friday. We'll have a copy at the front desk, so...
And it'll be in draft format, I believe, in accordance with statute, we have to have the finalized, um, copy ten days prior to adoption? So it'll be in its draft, and we'll be adding additional schedules into it as we have in the past.
Yeah, the big thing is just really finalizing the numbers for the bond issuance.
Correct.
You know?
Thank you, Mr. Suss.
Okay. Any questions?
No. Next up, ordinances and resolutions. Uh, tonight we have a second reading of the signed ordinance. In the past, a second reading has suggested that some kind of formal action was going to be taken. It was my understanding from our last meeting that really the purpose of our discussion tonight is going to be to fine-tune what we would like the Planning and Zoning Commission to take a further look at. So I've asked Director App to, uh, just go through that portion of her, her prior PowerPoint with regard to the changes, and what we'll do is with, in, in each of these sections, I would ask the trustees to please itemize specifically if there are certain, certain things that you would like the Planning and Zoning Commission to, uh, to take another look at. Director App.
Alright. So, guess we'll go over what the major changes are, and this is a kind of a brief overview of the major things that were updates in the code. Going to an administrative review, changing the way we do the sign area calculations, allowing for blade signs, allowing for additional rear wall signs for the businesses that about the railroad, changing our illumination allowances for, uh, individual channel letter signs, prohibiting the use of exposed raceways for those type of signs, adding design standards for wall signs, awning signs, blade signs, and sandwich board signs, allowing pylon-type signs, and also changing the hours of, hours of illumination and restricting illumination levels. We'll start with sign permit review, if anybody has any comments. Currently, um, signs require Planning and Zoning Commission approval. Um, the commission only meets once a month. The applicant submits their application for a sign permit, staff reviews it and puts it on the next available agenda for the Planning and Zoning Commission review. Uh, Planning and Zoning reviews and approves, and then staff can officially approve the sign permit application. The proposed amendment, um, would take that review away from the Planning and Zoning Commission, um, for staff to just do as a normal permit level review. Um, but there is also a caveat in there that at the zoning administrator's discretion, we can take the signs to the commission for their input, um, should there be a question as to whether it meets some of the, um, intent of the ordinance, things like that. Uh, the hope is that that would speed up the process for the businesses.
Any comments or suggestions on this item? Thank you.
We're good? Okay. Next, we have sign area computation. Currently, for sign area, there's not a, um, specific way that it states that sign area is to be computed. It does say that, um, you just kind of perimeter around what appears to be the sign, and if it has like a s- specific background, you're supposed to include that background in the calculations. When you have signs that are a little bit more interesting or have different elements to it, so like a Starbucks might have their little circle emblem, and then you have the letters, if you have to make one perimeter around it, um, which is what these examples show, you get a larger area than what is actually signage, because the circle would usually be bigger than the letters, something like that. So you do one big box around it, that's the area of the sign. So the proposed change would to get a little bit more lenience in trying to calculate the sign area to, um, allow for a little bit more signage, and that would be to take individual components. So you would be able to take the circle and do the area of the circle, and then do, connect it to the area of the lettering, and that's how you would calculate the area. So this gives a little bit of flexibility, so we're not, um, kind of over inflating what the actual area of the sign is, which is what the previous way kind of does for more complicated signs. Um, again, if you have to do the perimeter for a circle, you would just be doing a square, and so you still have that area that's around the circle for the area of the sign. So in this definition, it would allow for you to use the regular geometric form, so we would be able to calculate the area of the circle as opposed to making a square around a circle if the logo was a circle, that kind of thing. Um, so this, hopefully, will allow, um, a little bit more flexibility in calculating the sign area for the businesses.
Any me, any comments on the method of calculation? Mr. Ballerine?
The method of calculation has nothing to do with the size of the building itself.
No, that's just strictly for how we calculate the, the size of the sign.
So, okay.
Yeah, we, we will address the, the, that issue.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
We're good? Okay. Next, hours of illumination and illumination levels. Um, so there's a section in the ordinance that regulates illumination, what the different types of illumination and stuff are. Um, specifically, it has in there that no illumination is currently permitted between twelve-thirty AM and five AM. Um, it does, however, have the caveat that if the business is open during those hours, the sign may remain illuminated. Um, the other mention in there is that there is glare prevention for external illumination, that the light must be shielded, located, and directed so that the light does not shine or cause glare onto any surrounding public street or a private residence. But there aren't currently no maximum illumination levels. So, um, in our discussions, the Planning and Zoning Commission, um, there was some discussion about when signs should be turned off, and if signs, um, should have a maximum illumination level. So the proposal is that we would move up the turning off time for, uh, signs to eleven PM from twelve-thirty AM, so there'd be no illumination permitted from eleven PM to five AM. But we would keep the caveat in there that, again, if business is open during those hours, their sign may remain illuminated. Keeping the same glare prevention for external illumination, and then, uh, the proposal was a maximum illumination level of fifty-foot candles that would be measured at a distance equal to, um, whatever the, the width of the sign is. So if you have a ten-foot wide sign, you would measure the illumination levels at ten feet away from the sign.
Comments and suggestions on this one? Please, I, don't I recall if some folks had a concern about the, uh, illumination period?
Well, I, I discussed that, but I don't, I wouldn't, wouldn't... So, do you want us just to make notes and then, I thought, because we have some of this, Doug's already answered with his sheet, are we gonna go over that too?
Um, if Doug would like to talk about this, this part of the issue.
Well, I guess I, I had, I, I put together a recommendation for the board, and I apologize, I couldn't get that out to anybody until late today, so I'm sure you'd be surprised if anyone really had a chance to go over that. But, um, I'm not sure how you wanna handle this, if you want me to go ahead and do that now, or wait until Saturday goes through?
No, what I'd like to do, no, what I'd like to do is, is keep our discussion with regard to this specific question right now. Are there any suggestions? Do you want the, the Planning and Zoning Commission to take another look at the period of elimination?
Well, the reason I ask is, I don't want the Planning and Zoning Commission to look at this again. I don't think it's necessary. I don't object to it, but I don't think it's necessary.
Okay, what?
I know that's what we said the last time, and, but after I reviewed this subor and thought about it subor, I, and talked to some of the commissioners about it, I think that there's a way to do this, um, that, I mean, as I said, I don't object to saying it back to them, but I think it's a waste of time, um, their time. Uh, and so I have another proposal I would like to make that would, that would, I think, address all of the concerns that were talked about in the last meeting.
Why don't you, why don't you go ahead and present?
Okay, um, we, you know, there, there were se- several issues talked about at the last meeting. There's, there's a bunch of signs, and I'm, I'm, my focus is on the principal identification signs, not the window signs and the secondary signs and all those. Uh, I don't think there are any big issues with those, but in terms of each business having their principal identification sign, there's, I think, ten businesses right now that have those signs that have been non-conforming since two thousand and five. Uh, eleven signs total, but ten businesses, I believe that, that's correct. Um, and then there's six or seven that become non-conforming because of the two thousand and fourteen update, the present update that we're considering, that, that those would become non-conforming. My recommendation would be that all of the signs that are already non-conforming, that were non-conforming as of two thousand and five, and those includes the box signs primarily, be subject to the amortization schedule that's in the sign ordinance update, meaning that...
What, Ms. Sussman? I, I'm sorry, I thought we were just talking about that one piece up there. No?
He, he wanted to present his general...
Oh, I misunderstood, I thought only, 'cause I know you have something about a light times too in here.
Right.
I thought we were only, I'm confused what we're doing.
Can you go back to the illumination?
Go back to illumination?
I thought that's what we were talking about.
Yeah, let's, 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 let's rewind, rewind here a second. Because, because the, the problem with presenting your, your, your global plan right now is that there are some, there are some, some signs that under the new ordinance would be non-conforming, that I'm not sure everybody wants to be non-conforming. So it seems to me we should go through, sort of, the, the specifics first, and then, let's let you hold off and present your, your global plan later.
Okay.
So let's go back to the period of illumination first.
Bear with me a second as I make my way back.
So the question is, are we satisfied with the, the change going to eleven to five versus twelve-thirty to five?
I, I am. I think that there's, I think that as a town that supports green initiatives, that we should be very aware of light pollution as well, and not just light pollution because it affects, 'cause of there's the glare from lights, but I also think that there are, are s- studies, scientific studies showing that, that bright lights at night have adverse effect on, um, animals, have adverse effect on insects, and can have adverse effect on plants. Plus, bright lights are a major cause of greenhouse emissions, and I think as a community, we should be aware of that. And I think as a community, the number of cars that go through our streets between eleven and twelve-thirty are not so significant that they're going to leave, want to, going to see what's not gonna, that they're gonna be missing something on Burlington or on Riverside Road, but I am opposed to increasing light, or, or, I, I am in favor, I should say, of reducing light pollution in downtown area.
Other comments?
Because of the last, um, bullet point there that talks about the maximum illumination level, didn't we talk about that the fifty-foot candle, it, it wouldn't be a bright light, correct? Is, it, does that not get rid of the bright light issue?
You can help with that, yeah.
So in my, in my opinion, that kind of addresses the brightness of it, and so I would be in favor of leaving it at the existing hours, because I like, of what Trustee Ballerine said last time, if, if someone's coming out of Chuchu, I'd like for them to know that there is a bakery in town or whatever. So even though the bakery isn't open, that people coming from the other businesses can see what's here, say they just came in for dinner or whatever, um, and, and thinking that that last bullet point takes care of the brightness issue.
And, you know, we do have some lights that are safety issues. I mean, um, you know, I, I know Rick's, Rick's garage, I mean, he has lights on his sign. The, the, the benefit of the, the lights being on the sign is it lights up that whole area for people when they come off the train and walk through, you know, back to the, uh, you know, back to the, the apartments over there and down, uh, pines. So, you know, the, the lights aren't only to advertise the business, it's also, you know, there is a safety issue in our town, 'cause we're not the brightest town lit-wise.
So you're talking...
I would like it to remain the same.
Talking electricity now, now.
Mr. Foley?
Um, I, what was the rationale from the plan commission, um, reducing, um, going to an eleven PM?
Um, I think there was some discontent with how many businesses were leaving their signs on very late, that were not open, and so they were, so they kind of wanted it so that that ti, that time they were forced to turn off their lights would happen earlier than it current, uh, currently does for those businesses that are not open, so...
Mr. Foley, where do you come down?
Can I ask, I, I don't understand that as a reason. Jill, do you mind? Can you, do you recall?
Well, there's that, plus some businesses, our residential, head of residences, well, so you can say...
There was that as well.
I don't...
Well, no, do you, are you for the twelve-thirty or the eleven?
No, it, it doesn't bother me.
What does?
I, I, I'm fine with the change. If you wanna change the hours, it's fine.
I'm okay leaving it as is, twelve-thirty AM to five AM. I think with the illumination, the glare limits that we're adding in, um, I agree with what Trustee Ballerine was saying about the need for light when there are open businesses.
Okay, so, so keep in mind that this is not the final vote on the ordinance. At this point, we, they do not need to reconsider this aspect, the Planning and Zoning work.
Nope.
I mean, we're, we're gonna leave it at the twelve-thirty for now.
So we're not gonna cha, the...
You're gonna leave it at twelve-thirty?
Okay.
And not change it? And I've just been told to speak up.
Please, thank you.
Alrighty.
Next!
And we were okay with the maximum illumination levels as well?
Yes.
Okay.
I can hear myself just fine.
Alright, next up, sandwich board signs. Um, currently, uh, we have somewhat limited restrictions on them, just have a maximum four-foot height restriction. Um, they are only allowed on the public sidewalk where the village says that it's okay for them to be, so they have to come to us and say, "We'd like to put the sign here," and we tell them, "Okay, that's okay." We also have the caveat in there that it shall not obstruct pedestrian traffic or visibility for motorists. Um, the proposed changes are to add a little bit more restriction to it, um, still the four-foot maximum height, uh, we're adding a maximum area, so six square feet in area. We're having it match what our outdoor dining requirements are, and putting in that they must leave a five-foot pedestrian clearance, so there's consistency between those two, um, regulations. We're restricting it to wood or metal only in their, um, materials, that there would be no changeable copy, except for if it's like a dry erase board or chalk boards for handwritten messages, so that would be kind of the only allowable changeable copy. Um, and then that the type of sandwich board sign has to be that A-frame type sign, where it's joined at the top, separated at the bottom, two-sided, so...
Comments?
Is it, could you go back?
Uh-huh.
Is it still the, only allowed on public sidewalk, and is it still, needs permission from the, um, village or whatever?
Um, no, those are gonna be struck out, and it still requires a building permit, so we'll still be reviewing it, but then we have those restrictions on there, so when they submit, they will provide us with that information, and we'll be able to make sure that it's, um, maintaining that five-foot clearance.
So every time that they wanted to put it out, they'd have to?
No, when they, when they initially come to us and say, "I want to be able to have a sandwich board sign."
Okay, and then it's at their discretion?
They, you know, they will get the permit from us, and then they will be able to...
And they can have it for as long as they want, then?
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Ballerine?
I, I would suggest that we don't require permit for those. I, I don't think it's necessary, if they put it one up that's without checking on the code, and it doesn't conform, then, you know, they remove it, but I, it's a minor issue.
Okay, currently in the code, they technically require a permit, so we didn't change that part.
Okay, I'd, I'd rather not require a permit.
That, that was my thought, actually. It's, if, if it meets the requirements, why do they need to get a permit? Because we're trying to make it things easier for businesses, so why should they have to come to get a permit for a sandwich board?
I agree.
For a simple sandwich board, that's fine.
So we have two who think we don't need a permit, and the rest of you?
Well, you just made it difficult for the rec department and the library, because they both have changeable copy.
Mm-hmm. Some dry erase markers.
Well, they both, I, I mean, I know the rec department has a thrift shop, but they don't have that, that type of sign.
That type of sign. I think the library does as well.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, I understand.
So are you saying you want to allow?
We can set the tone by the signs.
I don't want the thrift shop. I, I don't, I mean, I know that they have them already, and I understand why we have them, but they're not...
Yeah, but they have to have changeable copy, because they're, they're advertising programs, they're advertising events, they're advertising books. You can't do that by buying a sign or, 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 or somebody go out there and with a...
They're, they're options, though.
Yeah, but that's...
Their, their changeable copy is allowed.
Yeah. It's not the changeable copy. Yeah, it's not the changeable copies.
It's gotta be the dry erase type, or you can buy different panels for it.
Chalkboard is most popular, very commonly used.
I can't see the chalkboard stopping somebody at the rec department so they could see the time or when the brochure's out, handwriting, I just, I just, I'm just for the rec department, for the library. I understand where you're coming from, from the businesses, but I think for those two places, it makes it very difficult, because they need to have changeable copy. And writing on a chalkboard is not conducive to that. A business that has a menu, yes, I think artistically, yes, you draw a nice little sandwich and things like that, that's great.
Joe, but I think that, for instance, a store could also argue that they have things that change all the time, or specials they want to change.
So would we like, so rather than thrash this out, would we like the planning and zoning commission to see if there's a way to accommodate your concerns, Mr. Ballerine?
Good point, loudly said, thank you.
Okay, so let them take a look at that issue, please.
Okay.
Next, please.
All righty. Pylon signs. So currently, the only type of ground sign that's permitted in the central business district is a monument sign. We are proposing to allow also a pylon sign. It's a type of freestanding sign, it's not a pole sign, but it's also not a monument sign, so it doesn't have that solid base underneath it. It would have the same requirements for it as a monument sign would, same height requirements, same area restrictions. It would still require site plan review, planning and zoning commission review. And then additional restrictions would be that they would need to be made of wood or simulated wood only, and they would also require landscaping around the base similarly to the monument signs.
Are we okay with that?
Yes.
Next, please.
Blade signs. This is a new type of sign. Currently, we do not allow any projecting signs in the central business district. This was a CMAP recommendation to allow these types of signs. They're a small pedestrian-oriented type of sign. This would be additional signage for the businesses, so this wouldn't be like a, you can get a wall sign, or you can get a blade sign, you can have both. There is a maximum restriction of six square feet proposed, maximum projection of three feet, with an eight-foot minimum clearance. They would only be allowed on the first floor of the building, and we would have a six-foot spacing requirement between signs, so they're not all jammed up around each other like around a doorway or anything. We have the restriction on there for it to be a metal or wood decorative bracket. There was some discussion at the last meeting about there being a restriction on not allowing wood. The code does currently, at the beginning of the sign ordinance, say that signs must be made of a non-combustible material or a material approved by the village fire department. So that's, we can take wood decorative bracket out of there if we feel like there's a conflict with that part of the code. Also, we have prohibited plastic signs, so that the signs then will probably be either metal or the kind of like pressed wood type of sign. And then we are restricting it so they are either non-illuminated, or they would be permitted to have external illumination. I did speak to our building inspector about the wood issue, and he said for non-internally illuminated signs, he didn't really feel that wood was really a safety hazard. So having those pressed wood, blasted wood signs, he did not feel that was gonna be a bad thing, although he did question the maintenance issues for wood brackets. So he is not necessarily in favor of wood brackets, but he doesn't have an issue with non-illuminated wood signs for these blade type of signs. So just a little background on that.
So there is a suggestion from Mr. Pollak that the projection for the blade signs would increase from 36 inches to 42 inches, but that the blade sign itself would not be more than 36 inches. Mr. Pollak, would you like to speak to that?
Well, I think that came from the last board meeting, that there was some concern that they should be allowed to extend further than 36 inches, so that the sign itself can be 36 inches, and then there's some space for the bracket. In my experience, 38 inches has been the standard, but if you want to make sure that, you know, there's plenty of room, 42, I think would cover everything.
Is that okay with everybody? I had a question for the trustees to consider. Should we give some thought to having some kind of standardized, maybe not a single kind of bracket, but a selection of brackets? Or are you okay with having multiple design brackets for the signs throughout the building?
Multiple designs.
Multiple designs, okay. So anything else on this one?
Multiple.
Multiple, okay.
Forty, yeah.
Okay.
All right, so do we want to go with the 42 inches then?
Yes.
But with the sign itself, no more than 36 inches.
Right, mhm. And we don't need the planning and zoning commission to review that one? Okay.
All right, move beyond our blade sign examples. Now we get to wall signs. So what we did was add some design standards restrictions to wall signs, and so that resulted in some changes. We're restricting wall signs to either individual letter signs or to nameplate signs. Individual letter signs would need to be directly mounted to the wall, so they would not be allowed to have a raceway for the individual letter signs. They can be internally illuminated. However, that type of illumination would have to be a silhouette type illumination, and you can see that on the right-hand side for the Tribera Tavern, that is the silhouette or halo type illumination. Whereas, let's see, I got another example here. On the right-hand side, Safatelle, that's your standard facelit illumination, and that is what's currently permitted for internally illuminated signs in our ordinance. Get back to this. The other change, well, this isn't a change, but this is what's staying in the code for individual letter signs. The current requirement, and it would stand for individual letter signs, is that you get one square foot of signage per lineal foot of frontage, not to exceed 25 square feet. That's, they did not make any change to that. The other type of signage they wanted, the planning and zoning commission recommended, was to allow for the nameplate signs, because they liked, like Molly's sign, some of those type of more plaque-looking signs. So we came up with allowing those. Those would be externally illuminated only, so you can see the Molly's sign has the little gooseneck light above it. However, the idea was that those signs don't typically go on your normal sign face area right above the door. Those tend to go on the side next to the door, so they would be a smaller type of sign. So the idea was that those would be restricted in size to less than what your individual letter sign was. So that one says you get one square foot per lineal foot of frontage not to exceed 18 square feet. So that is the proposal for wall signs from the planning and zoning commission. Now, some history on that, just to get back to it, is in 2005 is when this one square foot per lineal foot of frontage not to exceed 25 square feet came in. Prior to the 2005 ordinance, we just had one sign ordinance for business signs, and the restriction was you got one square foot of signage per lineal foot of frontage, period. That was the rule. So if you had a 50-foot wide building, you got 50 square feet of signage for your wall sign. When the 2005 central business district ordinance came in and the additional sign regulations for that, that's when the 25-foot maximum got put on there. So that explains some of the larger signs that we have that predate 2005, that are greater than 25 square feet. They are typically on larger buildings, and so they would have been originally approved with that one-for-one requirement, just so you have some background on that.
But metal might sign falls over 18, correct?
Correct.
So that's why that would be, that would be a non-conforming?
Correct. Well, it's currently non-conforming as well, because it's over 25 square feet. It's a 30-square-foot sign, so.
But that's, that sign, at the very, very beginning, it said, "Everything comes in front of the planning and zoning commission to get a permit."
That's correct.
That sign got a permit from our planning and zoning commission.
Yes, it did.
And was paid for and put up by the village, and now we're saying it can't be done, and the sign's a three-year ago.
When did it get the permission?
It went 2001, it was in 2011, and the sign was installed in 2012.
Sorry, which sign are you talking about?
Metal mites.
So it did go before the planning and zoning commission. And it was approved at that size, because the previous sign was that size.
And why is Fiori sign non-compliant?
Why would it be non-compliant?
Why would it be non-compliant?
Two different reasons for that one. The Fiori sign is mounted on a raceway, and so it would be made non-conforming because of the exposed raceway that it's mounted onto. The other reason would be the type of illumination. It is technically a facelit, internally illuminated sign, although it does look like it's the halo illuminated sign, because it has that black face on it with just the white around the edges. So it looks kind of like a halo illuminated sign, because the light just shines in that white stripe that's around the letter. But it's not technically a halo or silhouette illuminated sign. So that would be the other issue with it, would be that.
Would you say that's one of the pricier signs in town? From a cost standpoint, for the sign?
It would probably be on the pricier side, yes. It's not as pricey as some of the ground signs or the pole sign, but it is also a reused sign. It's one they purchased for a different unit, at their previous...
My understanding was that they were made aware of the fact that the code was being changed.
I did. When they went through the process, I did tell them.
And they still chose to put that sign up.
But that doesn't, that doesn't, I don't think that necessarily answers the question, or gets to the point that he's talking about, is the fact that I, and I think Mike is getting the same way. I like that sign. Now, I know I'm not allowed to like that sign. But what I'm saying is I like the way that sign works with the building. I like the way it does what it does, so I would like, I don't want to eliminate those type of signs from this code.
So let's cut it backwards. What is the, so what is the problem with that? What is the problem with raceway signs? Why do people not like those?
Well, you had a picture, well, Floyd's Barbershop, there was a picture of a subway sign you had.
I don't think I have that one.
You don't have it, okay.
That was in the old presentation, sorry.
The problem is, to answer your question, trustee Collins, the problem is, is yes, you can do a raceway sign that looks attractive like Fiori.
Right.
But the vast majority of them are not attractive.
Right, but so how do we word it so that it's a sign?
I don't think you can. I think what you have to do is say that Fiori, because they are there, I think you have to grandfather that type of sign or give it a longer amortization period, so that they get the full use of that sign for the life of the sign, because it's already there. If they had come to us for a brand-new sign, that sign would be more attractive if it were not a raceway sign.
See, I don't know about that.
I think it would be.
Because the raceway of that sign is actually integral part of the design of the sign, because it's the...
Where is the raceway?
It's the, I can't, I don't have...
Well, it's the, let me see if I can blow it up.
You can't see it. This is the raceway right here.
They have a striping, they have a...
Striping, that's wrong. Yeah, so that striping looks like, to me, like part of the cupcakes. So what they've done is they've...
Well, it comes down and it has the gourmet bakery, is that what it says on the bottom part of it?
So they designed the raceway into the design of the sign.
Again, that just solidifies my point, that is a very unique sign.
Right, but couldn't we specify that if a sign was a raceway-type sign, that the raceway had to be either disguised within the design of the sign and/or matched to the background of the...
Right, that's my point.
I think what you would have to do is create a category of conditional signs, like a special use in the zoning ordinance, where that particular raceway-type sign is a conditional sign approval, because what you're asking for essentially is a design review. You can't write that into the code. You can't write to where someone could just come and get a permit, because Fiori is well-done, I agree, and I think you have every right to like it.
The only way you might be able to do it is to say that where the raceway is part of the design of the sign as opposed to merely function, but that's the closest I can go.
Okay, let me interject here for a second. Here, the first question I have from the trustees is, under the new ordinance, we, they prohibit facelit illumination. Let's set aside for a moment the raceway issue. So the new ordinance would prohibit Safatelle. Do you want to prohibit facelit illumination?
I do.
And again, what's the reason behind that? Because it's too bright?
I think some of it was just that it's a little bright, and also it just looks a little bit nicer for the halo. It's just a nicer glow, it's a softer glow, it's not as a harsh look.
So the lighting is not coming from the letter, it's coming from behind the letter?
Well, it's within the letter, but it's shining backwards at the building.
So the halo is on, is destination of eternity.
Right, it's shining back towards the building.
At the building, so then you get that halo effect around the letter. Whereas where the facelit ones, the light bulbs or, you know, whatever they are, the LEDs are at the back of the letter, and they shine through an acrylic face on the letter itself. So it's a harsher kind of illumination, whereas you have a softer look.
The facelit signs would also be subject to the candle power determination?
Yes, they would still have that maximum illumination.
I don't have a problem with either one. I'm not that picky about this kind of stuff.
I guess the question I have for the board too is, we, the plan commission spent nine months looking at this. And we, many people on this board have said, unless we have a strong reason for not going with the recommendation of the plan commission, they're, in that sense, and so I'm hesitant when people say, "Well, I like this," or I, you know, it's...
But that's why I'm asking what the plan commission's, what the reason was why they didn't like it, and like...
Again, I was putting in design standards, and so one of the design standards that was chosen to be put on there was to restrict the type of illumination to the silhouette type illumination, because as a design standard, that looked better. Some of this conversation, again, came in before I was here, so I don't know if Doug can talk about a little bit of the more background behind that.
Well, what I was gonna say is, if we want to know a very specific answer to that question, and if we're going to send it back, well, we'll get, let's get a specific answer. I don't think this is a very good example of the difference between facelit and backlit, because typically, I think the facelit look worse than that, and the backlit looks better than that one. But generally in the industry, it's accepted that the backlit signs look better generally. That's what most people who, if you did a survey, a visual preference survey, you'd find most people would prefer the backlit signs to the facelit signs. Doesn't mean you can't have an attractive facelit sign or an unattractive backlit sign.
But are they allowed to backlight it with any color light? Or is it, or do we have to say it has to be a white light?
We did not restrict color.
Red light, a blue light, a green, I mean, these are the things?
Actually, the colored light on backlit sometimes looks better, because it doesn't glare as much.
Okay, so I think we have, I think we have, so I would like to know a specific answer why they wanted to do away with facelit illumination. Because as we can see in this example, they can look very nice. And then the ones we're saying we want can look not so nice. And my personal, my personal opinion is, I would like to keep as less restriction on our businesses as possible.
I would too.
With regard to the kinds of signs they want. So if we're gonna start saying no to things, I would like a specific reason as to why. The raceway issue, I think that's something else they need to look at to see if there is a way to draft it that would allow the kind of raceways that Fiori is an example of. I think the most difficult question is the 18-foot issue. How the 18-foot issue, both with regard to facelit and to the nameplate, because we have obvious examples in towns, for example, Riverside Foods, where
Yes.
that would be too small. So they need to take another look, perhaps some kind of percentage of...
And I mean, we can go back to, for buildings that are greater, you know, pick a number that's greater than 25 square feet, and say, if you have a single-unit building that is greater than 25 feet of display frontage, that you would be allowed a one-for-one sign.
That's what we would like to...
That, you know, something along those lines, and that's a very classic restriction.
Because a sign could look ridiculous, depending on how big the building is, to have this...
A small sign.
Right.
If you look at the nameplate signs that we have pictures of from our downtown, the ones that look okay, even the bigger ones, are the ones that are mounted to the side of the window as opposed to above the window. The nameplate signs that are above the window are the ones that look bad, in my opinion, and that would include the Riverside Pilates. So I think one of the things we can ask the plan commission about is their opinion of, if you have a larger nameplate sign, that it has to be below the window, the top of the window. Metal mites is below the top of the windows.
You know, we talked about, we don't want to write the ordinance, or the regulations to exclude, you know, we don't want to say we want to take care of Riverside Foods or whatever, but I think there is a way to rewrite, to look at those... or whatever, but I think there is a way to rewrite, to look at those signs and say, okay, why is that one okay?
Right.
What is it about that sign that makes it different, that it's all right? And then write it that way. So it's not talking about a specific sign, but it's talking about what are the elements in that sign that make it acceptable.
Right. And I think part of the 25-square-foot restriction in the 2005 ordinance had to do with proportion. You had narrow, you know, you had smaller units. It's smaller downtown. We don't necessarily need very large signs. However, you do have these anomalies where you have, like a Riverside Foods, which is a much longer, I mean, it's, I want to say, wide is that? It's gotta be 50 feet, if not more, wide. A 25-square-foot sign is, is gonna look disproportionate on that, on that facade. So, you know, I think you can definitely go instances and say you get one-for-one, but if you do have a building that's 100 feet wide along the frontage, do we really want them to have 100-square-foot sign? So we can definitely look at what a more reasonable maximum would be for those.
Okay.
For those type of buildings.
So is that it on this particular one? Okay.
We'll look at that. Okay.
Okay, let's move on.
All righty. Same for rear wall signs. We're allowing rear wall signs for the businesses that abut the railroads, so this would be additional signage. It would not be, you know, they wouldn't have to pick, my rear wall sign is gonna be my primary frontage sign. So this would be additional signage for them, similar to a blade sign. It would follow the same restrictions as a wall sign, so that's the conversation we just had. It would be restricted to individual letter sign or a nameplate sign. It would be restricted to 25 square feet or 18 square feet or whatever we newly come up with. It would follow those same restrictions. In addition, we would allow it to be mounted on the second-story facade to allow for visibility from the railroad, even if the business isn't a first-story business. Obviously, that would, the caveat would be that the building owner would allow that, but as the village, we would say, you can have a sign up on the second story if it's okay with your landlord. It would also only be permitted if all their other signs are in conformance with the village code. I don't know if I mentioned that with the blade signs, but that was also a restriction that's in there for blade signs, is that you can have the blade sign, but your other signage needs to be in conformance with the code.
I'm really gonna have many of these signs. I mean, Patty, above your building, is that a condominium?
No.
Is it an apartment?
It's an apartment.
It's an apartment. Okay. I mean, some of the, the units on the second floor of Burlington are either condos or apartments. I can't imagine somebody bolting a sign to the back of someone's condominium on the second floor, right? And I think the only two places that can have those, already have them. And that's Riverside Bank and Metal Lights.
Not cheap.
And he's, behind him is a garage. He, he owns the second floor of his case. I mean, I guess he could put some on the second floor.
But with regard, with regard to the ordinance, we're okay with this, except we'll look at the, at the size, the size issue again.
My, my question is illumination on the rear.
Mm-hmm.
You know, is this, is this, I mean, should we have, should we have even an illumination requirement on the rear? Because again, from a safety standpoint, these are alleyways. The more lighting we can have in an alleyway, I think the better, because, you know, I'm just, just my thought, I look at, just, I look at the only two rear signs that there are that really can have them, and that's, like, say Riverside Bank. And I don't know if that's lit or not, I've never driven back there tonight, but, I mean, if, if we're trying to use, you know, if we're redoing the downtown, and we want to get, we want to get people to park back there, probably would be helpful to have more lighting back there, and this is a way to have, you know, more lighting that doesn't necessarily affect, you know, anybody residentially, because it's running along the railroad tracks. Just a, because there's not gonna be any of them, because I, again, as Mike, as Mike says, that many of the buildings aren't conducive to it, except the ones that already have them.
I guess my preference would be, is if we're concerned about safety because of lighting, then we, as a village, put in more lights that fit with the area and not just say it's okay to have bright lights at the back, on the back of your building, if that's really an issue. If, if we really think it's an issue that people are not parking back there or that they believe it's dangerous, then we should do something about it as a, as a government.
Anything else?
So then we get into nonconforming signs. So one of the updates was to make it very clear that a face change to a nonconforming sign would not be permitted. That would constitute a change to a nonconforming sign, and so would require the sign to come into conformance. The other change was that, A, they asked that staff would actually enforce an amortization schedule, since there is one on the books. And then they proposed a change to it, shortened it up to five years from what is currently in the ordinance of up to seven years to bring it into conformance. This is based on the value of the sign. In their discussions, it came about that we didn't really believe that there was too many signs in town that were of a 25,000 or more value. So they said, why have the seven years on there? Let's just cut it off at 25,000 and have, everything needs to come into conformance within five years. So that's their proposed schedule for the nonconforming signs that they have recommended to you. Again, like I said, it's based on the estimated value of the sign at the time of purchase. Staff went and contacted a sign company to get an idea of what it would cost today to buy a box sign or an internally illuminated individual letter sign, or a silhouette illuminated individual letter sign, a pole sign, final letters on a window, blade sign, awning sign. So these are kind of like the average cost, so this would be like the replacement cost of those kind of signs. So if we wanted somebody to get rid of box sign and get an internally illuminated individual letter sign, it would cost them $4,500 to get that new sign. Presumably, we would base their original value of their box sign at $3,200, so they would need to come into conformance within the two years.
So we've covered the, the specific, different kinds of signs?
Yes.
Okay. So now, now the question really is the, the broader question we had last time about the amortization schedule. And Mr. Pollock, I think this is where your proposal really comes in.
Yeah, see, I, I had, you know, I had, after listening to the comments up to now, I, I am inclined now to say, yes, we do need to send this back to the Planning and Zoning Commission to answer some of these questions that the trustees have. But in terms of amortization, what I would like to recommend is two categories, basically, of amortization. One is the signs that are already nonconforming, that were made nonconforming as of 2005. And again, that's signs for 10 different businesses, I think a total of 11 signs. I'm just talking about the principal identification signs, the wall signs mainly. Those signs that have had up to 10 years now, nine years, basically, of amortization, I would recommend that we maintain the schedule as recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission, meaning that those signs have a two- to five-year amortization schedule based on the value of the sign. For most of those signs, it's two years. I think there might have been one that estimated at three years. You know, under the theory that they've had, that they're already nonconforming, and they've had a useful life, most, if not all, of those signs have had a useful life, and, and so they've gotten their value out of those signs. But I would also add that for those signs, those 10, 10 businesses, 10 signs, that we create a sign grant program, a sign replacement program, where we would pay for a certain percentage of the replacement cost, not to exceed a certain number. The numbers I had in mind was that in the first year, we would pay up to 50% of the replacement cost, the cost of the new sign, not to exceed $2,000. And in the second year, the village would pay up to 25%, not to exceed $1,000. Based on my estimates, the program at the maximum would cost the village $22,000. But it would be a way to assist the businesses in replacing those signs that are already nonconforming. Then we have six or seven principal signs that would become nonconforming, based on, on the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation. Some of those, that number may end up being less if we allow internally illuminated individual letters or if we allow raceways. But assuming we, we, the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission remains as is, there would be six or seven signs that would become non, six signs, I believe, that would become nonconforming. And my recommendation would be to have an amortization schedule of 10 years for those signs. And that logic is based on the fact that the 2005 nonconforming signs have had 10, approximately 10 years, up to 10 years to, as, to be amortized. And also that, that would give, you know, all of those signs that are existing, that have become nonconforming, would probably get replaced in that time period anyway. But at worst, they'd have 10 years' use of those, 10-plus years' use of those signs, and they would, and that's probably more than the useful life of a sign anyway, before it becomes in need of, of replacement. So that would be my recommendation on amortization. Also, possibly add that we could also add to the code a conditional sign category for signs like Fiori, and this is something that, that we could ask the Planning and Zoning Commission to look at in greater detail. But as we were discussing earlier with the Fiori sign, I mean, all of these different types of signs can be made to be attractive, but most raceway signs, most box signs are not attractive, so we have to kind of regulate based on, on, on the lowest common denominator, if you will. But we could create a conditional sign category, similar to a special use, where a unique sign could come before the Plan Commission and the board and ask for approval based on, you know, that the sign meets the, does not meet the technical definition of a permitted sign, but otherwise meets the intent of the code. The Antiana sign would be an example of that. The sign is uniquely suited to the property, or that it's not a traditional storefront such as Riverside Garage. You know, we could create a category to where we could make those signs legal forever, much like a variation, but it wouldn't require any type of showing of hardship. And I would also recommend that we not charge a fee for that category of signs. So to summarize, I guess what I'm recommending is that the 2005 signs be amortized in the two-to-three-year schedule as recommended, but that the village assist in the replacement cost for those signs. The 2014 signs, the signs that become nonconforming now as of 2014, be given a 10-year amortization period.
Comments?
I don't know if we can comment on it until after the Plan Commission takes a look at it and decides on this conditional issue. I mean, I, I mean, I look at a few things here. One of the, one of the things is this, this Higgins sign. And I, and I'm not, I'm not so worried about the sign itself, but the building itself. How is, how is a tenant in that building gonna advertise?
They get a blade sign.
You can't see a blade sign from, I mean, you gotta, I'm talking, from, from.
From Riverside?
Riverside, from the end of the corner, because you won't be able to. I walked through Hinsdale the other day, and I found two blade signs, and the only blade sign that I could read.
It would be.
I mean, you couldn't, you couldn't see that. You couldn't see a blade sign from the end of the corner.
Can you see the Higgins glass sign from Riverside currently?
I can see it from here.
Yeah, I was standing in the alley right there.
What does it mean, off-premise assignment?
It's not, Higgins glass is not that end unit, so that's not their wall. That is on the Realtors.
It's on the building, but it's not on the unit.
Right.
Yeah, the classic off-premise sign is a billboard, but it gets anything where the sign is not on the property or on the building.
And that, that worries me about that building. How would, how would anyone in that building be able to advertise it to there?
Well, they were the biggest proponents of getting blade signs, the owners were.
Not only that, if they can always apply, I mean, this, this is an exception, that we're talking about one of the buildings in town, and that might make a good case for a variation in it, if they really believe that.
So that could be considered a hardship?
Well. Well, that would be a variation. That's something different. We already have a variation process, like sign code, but you, you have to show hardship what, what Trustee Pollock was talking about was a conditional special use of a sign where show unique circumstances.
So that's what I'm, that's where I'm getting to. What would this be classified under?
I would recommend it be classified as a conditional sign, so that they don't have to meet hardship, they just have to show that there's some uniqueness to the property where the sign code doesn't fit them. I personally feel that a blade sign would make it more visible, more visible than the existing sign, because it would project, but if they feel like it, you know, does it, that they need this sign on the, I mean, this sign's already nonconforming. So the update has nothing to do with making this further nonconforming, it's already is, is nonconforming.
Because of the size.
Because of the location.
No.
On the side of the building and not in front of the business.
But, but again, somewhere along the line, they got a permit to put it up there.
Right.
That, that's the, that's where the, the problem that I run into, because everything here that I see, except one, and that would probably be the temporary signs on the last page, probably got a permit at one time to get in here.
Yeah. That's why you amortize and not just make them remove it now. That's why you amortize and give them two to 10 years to continue using the sign.
And 50% of the cost.
Because they did get a permit, and they deserve to have some useful life of that sign. You know, because they got a permit where they shouldn't have, does that mean they should be allowed to have it forever? I don't think so. I think you give them a reasonable, you make a reasonable accommodation, two to 10 years, as I've suggested, and, and then you bring it into conformance. I think that's more than fair.
So here, here's how, here's what I think is going on here. So one question would be whether you want the, the Planning and Zoning Commission to look at the concept of this conditional sign. The broader question is, is whether you want to have an amortization schedule or not, whether you're interested in grandfathering existing signs in, and then have this new ordinance applied to new signs going forward, or if a sign has changed, which was, was really kind of the gist of our conversation last time.
But Ben, this is such a different approach than what we talked about last time, that my preference would be that we turn this before deciding on the amortization.
You want to get this, you want to get Mr. Pollock's?
Yeah, yeah, because this is really a different way of thinking about it.
What is, what is your feeling about the idea of the village subsidizing signage?
Where is it coming from?
Tax dollars.
I, I, I mean, general fund, I mean, where, where, where is this money coming from?
In our situation right now, it'd come from, it doesn't need the reserves.
Okeydoke. On first blush, I don't, I don't, I don't see government in the sign business myself. But then again, the village can buy the recreation department a new sign, since they're gonna make sure to get rid of there.
Okay, so we want this to go back, so you want this to go back to Planning and Zoning?
Yeah, can I make, make one comment, though? It's been said several times, you know, we can't pick signs by ones that we think look nice. But I think it's also true that we can't pick signs that we don't want because we don't think they look nice. So if we're gonna go with one, then we've got to go with both. So to me, the real issue here is that what's been said, they were given a permit, and I just don't like changing the rules in midstream, whether I think it's an ugly sign or not. And so I am not in favor of any amortization schedule. I'm in favor of grandfathering, so just my opinion.
Any further comment? Okay, so you'll take this back, Mr. Pollock's suggestion is back to PCC, and then they can come back to us.
Yep.
Are we finished?
I think we are finished.
Hallelujah.
Hmm? Indeed. You're finished for a little while.
That was very well done. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Director Abbott.
This is a motion that.
There's sort of a formal conveyance?
Yeah, you should have it.
Okay, I'd ask for a motion to send it back to the Planning and Zoning Commission for reconsideration with our.
Second. Correct.
Motion by Mr. Pollock.
Second.
Second by Mr. Ballereen. Please call the roll.
Trustee Sussman.
Aye.
Trustee Collins.
Aye.
Trustee Ballereen.
Aye.
Trustee Collins.
Aye.
Trustee Pollock.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up is an ordinance submitting the village code of the Village of Riverside relative to paving requirements in the B2 Central Business District. Manager Francis.
Previously, back in November 2011, sidewalks in B1 and B2 districts were constructed with hand-sprinkled Swanee gravel. In 2011, the village code was updated and removed all reference to Swanee River gravel and any reference to the B1 and B2 districts. As part of the Burlington Streetscape program, staff will be proposing and recommending that pavers be utilized in, as part of the Streetscape design, and so therefore the code needs to be amended to reflect that. And so staff is recommending that the village board approve an ordinance amending the village code of the Village of Riverside relative to paving requirements in the B2 Central Business District.
So I'd ask for a motion, a second, to approve. Motion by Ms. Collins, second by Ms. Sussman. Any further comment?
Are we prepared for the maintenance of brick paver sidewalks?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. We break the discussion. Please call the roll.
Trustee Sussman?
Aye.
Trustee Pollak?
Aye.
Trustee Ballerine?
Aye.
Trustee Collins?
Aye.
Trustee Foley?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up are considerations, and this is a final budget discussion with regard to the garage and facility storage discussion we've had before. Ms. Francis, did you want to leave us with this?
Yes. Also, as an additional follow-up, since this is part of the budget discussion, based on the earlier discussion of the village-wide traffic study, we will incorporate that as part of the 2015 budget capital. So when we present the budget for the budget hearing, that will include the $30,000. So I just want to make that particular comment on the record.
With regard to that?
Yes.
What about the potential for this sign grant program? Should that be, should that also be included as a potential line item if it's going to be under discussion?
Under capital projects, we want that incorporated as part of the Streetscape. We can up the Streetscape budget line item if we're viewing it as part of the project in its entirety.
And that doesn't mean we don't have to ultimately approve that, but it seems if we're going to consider it, we might as well go ahead and get it into the budget, right?
We'd put part in for 2015 and part for 2016, is that how you would do it?
Yeah, you'd have to average, because under the proposal, everyone could elect to do it, and you want to take the bigger funding, so.
That's true.
I don't know if you'd average that or financially how you'd account for it, but...
We could put it all in, and then obviously, there would be an application process formulated around it, so we'll go ahead and then add it in as part of the Streetscape project in its entirety, so we'll increase that by 22,000, and then we'll also add in a separate line for the village-wide traffic study for 30,000.
Perfect.
And staff has actually, since the previous meeting, there were some items that the board had directed staff to obtain, cost estimates to erect a pole barn for storage at Public Works, review available open area at Public Works, obtain cost estimates to relocate fire storage for the village, review existing storage within the village, and then evaluate whether or not another storage option is available for Parks and Rec. Executive staff reviewed various options, evaluated existing locations, and the recommendation of executive staff as a whole, which both has a cost containment convenience, incorporates all those elements in addition to the objectives of the village board. And staff is recommending that we remove the garage rehab, both the 40,000 that's budgeted as part of Public Works and the 40,000 under Parks and Rec, which is 80,000 in total. Also remove the budgeted amount for the contaminated soil and relocate the two antique fire engines that are currently located at the youth center, relocate Parks and Rec from the garage that is behind us to that location, and Public Works is able to accommodate. I spoke with Director Bailey. They may need to double park a couple of vehicles, but it's nothing that they can't accommodate. It's not considered a severe hardship in my eyes. And then the village board can discuss whether or not they want to demo the garage, and it allows for ample room for Parks and Rec. They're at the hub of where their activity is in the central part of town, and they have easy access to both their vehicles and equipment.
So would your recommendation be to include the demolition of the garage in the 2015 budget then?
If the village board chooses to do so and relocate the garbage cans, I think it accommodates, it hits all of those points that we've previously discussed.
So what do you think?
I think that garage, it should be demolished as soon as possible.
I think we have to, because if that garage was on one of our residents' property, we would ask them to demolish it, so what's good for them is good for us, so we have to get rid of it.
Well, I've been saying that all along, get rid of that thing, it's junk. It's junk.
You're very expressive tonight, that facial expression.
You've fought this battle long enough, you have nothing more to add.
He's miming his...
I'm speaking for him.
What should we talk about tonight?
You're just kind of...
So, so we're okay with this proposal?
Yeah, it's fine.
Sure.
Okay, so I will include the $30,000 for, we'll include the $30,000 to demo. I will work with Public Works to get an estimate to, because well, part of that project will be to build an enclosure for those trash cans that are currently there, relocate those. We will go ahead and relocate those two pieces of fire equipment over to Public Works, and then I'll work with Parks and Rec to get estimates as to organizational structures for their equipment.
Ed, can you look into what we can do with the soil? I mean, talk to IDA and see if we can balance onsite with that soil. And if we can, I really want us to think next year to talk about putting up some sort of a pole barn over there, you know?
When I looked at it, I think you can put up a pole barn without moving the soil.
I know.
In other areas, I think that if you did a site study of it...
Well, it was my understanding that we had actually asked that at the last meeting, that we'd look into that for 2016 discussion.
I'd like to know what the state's view is on it, and I would love for us to see a plot of that property with the new structure on it, with the new building on it that we put up a few years back, and the outbuildings that are on it, so that I can get a better idea of the size of that property.
And also whether or not the fence is actually on the property line, or if there's more property than what the fence is, has, I would like to see that.
Okay. I just got to look. So that's it for that. Under new business, given our discussion we just had, if anyone is still watching at home, one, God bless you for still being watching at home, but don't forget on November 12th, at 7:00, we will have a town hall meeting at which we will be unveiling the plan for the Burlington Central Business District, Streetscape. So 7:00 in the auditorium, November 12th. We encourage all residents to come out, take a look at the plan, and give us their feedback, and I think you're going to like what you see. So we have no further new business. We do have need for an executive session tonight to consider the employment compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, and to consider the purchase or lease of real property for the use of the public body. So let's see if I can get this right this time. I would ask for a motion to adjourn to executive session, not to reconvene, no final action will be taken.
For the reasons stated.
For the reasons stated. I almost got it. Motion?
Smooed.
Motion by Ms. Sussman. Second by Ms. Collins. Please call the roll.
Trustee Sussman?
Aye.
Trustee Pollak?
Aye.
Trustee Ballerine?
Aye.
Trustee Collins?
Aye.
Trustee Foley?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.